Meeting to order, need the motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made second at a discussion, if not on paper say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries purchase order, any questions on the purchase order? There is no interim budget revisions, there's a change in status, change in status received from the Honorable John Small County Clerk for Marcy Knoll. She is being promoted to interim chief deputy with a salary increase from thirty-two thousand one hundred to forty-three thousand one hundred and six effective May the fourth, two thousand twenty. Have a minutes for April the twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Everyone, looks like all the council was present, so any changes or corrections on those on the county council calendars? We'll be here next Thursday on the fourteenth. On the boards and commissions, looks like on the eleventh month, Monday the eleventh, we have a two-thirty PM LPPC, PM Water District, six PM Farm Land Protection, six PM Airport Authority. On Wednesday, the thirteenth, nine-thirty AM Development Authority, six PM Roundhouse Authority, on Thursday the fourteenth, scheduled six-thirty PM Fire Board, any changes or corrections at this time on those? We have a bond reduction, reduction for Bamberry Holdings LLC, the lakes of Martinsburg, phase, I don't have the phase numbers, but lots eighty-eight through one oh eight.
Section one, phase nine.
Section one, phase nine. We have a bond reduction for Panhandle Builders, Stonecrest PUD, phase three, lots one thirty-eight to one sixty, file number zero-two-two dash one-five, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for Panhandle Builders, Spring Mills PUD, phase eleven, section two, lots one sixty-six through one eighty-one, file number zero-one-six dash one-four, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Bond reduction for Panhandle Builders, Brattle Creek, phase six, section one, lots four nineteen to four thirty-six, and four seventy-four to four seventy-six, file number zero-two-one dash one-three, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. A bond reduction for Panhandle Builders, Stonecrest PUD, phase four, lots one ninety-nine through two thirty-six, plus commercial lot five, file number zero-two-two dash one-five, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Any questions for Dirk on these?
I don't have questions for Dirk, but I do have a question, is there, is, when, when is the next tax sale? Sheriff's tax sale? Two year. Well, that's what, and that's my, that's my question, what, what's happening to it? Is it, is it being delayed till the fall and everything getting done then, or how is that being handled? Tammy might know. Well, Norwood said you wouldn't know.
She left. She left. Boy, he threw you under the bus.
My educated guess would be that it had been delayed because all of those presbyters are being delayed.
Right, so, so, and then they gotta go through a whole process, so those things could happen within three months of each other. Have, has anybody, is there anybody designated to look through that, that list to make sure that we're not selling any, selling any common properties to subdivisions that we have in the past?
The planning department has a little group, all of us.
So is that, is that Dirk raising his hand back? So you said we, who is, who is, who's in charge of doing that, is that? So Heather's the one that's actually going through and looking at it? Okay, that was my question, which, which individual was assigned that task to?
I know we started doing that after there was a couple of years around. The seller of Stormwater Management.
Right, I mean, that's been happening for years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have, we still have some Stormwater Management areas that were bought for taxes that people still hold, which I know one person bought a lot, lot of them.
I think he still has a lot.
We do. We do, and their, their general, their general behavior, once they do that, is they just don't pay taxes on it. So it should be pretty easy to find those out, because there's gonna be no taxes paid on them, if you go down the scroll, things that aren't paying taxes, I would think the assessor's office could find that relatively easy, but.
I think it'd be more than the tax office to do that.
I just wanted to make sure something was happening, so that we're not doing.
I guess it'd be nice to Dirk, or Norwood, or whoever wants to take lead on this, to give us a report on how, does whoever's in charge, assessors office, tax office, or whatever common areas have been sold, and who owns them. All right, we can stay on top of it. Is that right?
Yeah, well, it's, I remember years ago, it, that there was actually a house approved on a, a common area, a stormwater management area, actually, in a subdivision. What's that, Fruity? Uh-oh.
Here comes the answer. Karen, we was just talking about, there's been in the past some common area of stormwater and subdivisions that were sold with taxes, and Dan was asking whether we're trying to, to.
Track.
Track the, track the ones that may be on the tax sale to, to make sure that they don't get sold, or even let us know which ones have been sold in the past, and who has possession of it, is that possible?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
No, um, cause, um, so, tickets that go to sale, the list is our name, um, that's the only thing we have, is a ticket and a name when it goes to sale.
But when it goes to sale, if it says such-and-such HOA, that would put a red flag on it?
Not really, because then we, we can't go through and pull them all out.
Okay.
There's not that many HOA tickets in there, um, and when we run the whole, whole delinquent list, just gives name and ticket, of course, we can go in and look at all of them, but we can't, because there's too many others to look at.
So I guess I'm thinking then, if the HOA has not, subdivision has not been turned over, the HOA is still.
Could be it from a builder's side, or an individual, too, right?
Right, and that's generally what happens if they don't turn it over, it's in the builder's name, and he doesn't, he doesn't wanna keep it anymore, it's no use to him, so he quits paying taxes on it, you know, and then he quits paying taxes on it, you know, some property investor that just buys up real estate, ends up with it, they find out what it is, and they quit paying taxes, so it's in a vicious cycle of just going in and coming out, and going in and coming out, and nobody's paying taxes on it, it's not conveyed to the.
Then it comes more to the state, basically.
Well, I mean, that's, that's my point, it just keeps.
If it goes, um, if it goes to sale, and no one bids on it, no, like, individual goes bid on it, the state ends up with it anyway, and then the state is the one that handles the collection of the length of taxes to redeem in the property, and of course, their content works if it's been ours. If it's sold to an individual, they have eighteen months to redeem it, but the state holds theirs a different way, and it's actually taken off the books once it's in possession of the state.
Right, but it's common knowledge that there's investors out there that, that just buy everything, I mean, they just buy whatever, so they, they can't lose, how do they lose? I, I mean, if they, if they pay a tax sale on a piece of property, the only thing they're losing is that initial tax cost, because if they quit paying taxes on it for the next couple of years, it's gonna go back into the roll and get, get sold again, and that's what happens, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, if there's some type of method in place to stop that from happening, because I see it every time there's a tax sale.
Um, the only ones that actually really keep getting sold are ones that they wait until the property is sold to pay their taxes, so they'll get two years paid, and then they'll just go ahead and let it go for two more years, and then they wait till it's sold again, and then they just redeem it, and then it gets sold again, but property that's, uh, once the state gets it, if it's not bid on, it doesn't keep going back into being sold.
I, I understand what you're saying.
The state come, they'll come down if it's not redeemed, the state comes down and they sell it themselves, they have their sale for anything that's not redeemed.
But if I send somebody from my business down to the tax sale, and I say, you just buy anything that's under a thousand dollars, any, any piece of ground that's under a thousand dollars tax sale, go ahead and buy it, I'm gonna buy one of those pieces of property.
Right.
They're, they're gonna come across, then I'm gonna end up buying it, and, not that I do that, but I, I would end up, or an investor would end up buying those pieces of property, and then as soon as you get that piece of property, and it gets turned over to you eighteen months later, and you decide to research it, find out exactly what the value is, it's like, yeah, why would I pay taxes on it? And so they don't pay anything, and it just goes right back into it, I mean, I know of several pieces of property that have done that over the years, and, and there's not a system that we have in place that stops that, I don't know, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, at this point, it's really hard to even tell what properties they are, because they're not owned by HOA, they're not designated on a tax map.
Well, it has to be, it would have to be a new process started where planning would record those tax maps and parcel numbers.
Well, I know doing forward.
Library of, right.
Doing forward, we got it solved, because now they're making sure that these are, are turned over, and, and I, I appreciate what they've done for going forward, but we're still seeing those, when's the next tax sale, that was another question.
I'm actually. Actually, we don't know when the next land sale is, because of COVID, they've moved out the link and date out to June, so we can't even wanna listen to June first, so we don't know if that's gonna affect the date of the land sale or not, it's generally, we have it versus second week in November, um, but since the, the time span, I think they gave us from October twenty-third to November, something to happen, land sale, I don't know if since they moved the link and date on the second half to June first, I don't know if they're gonna move out the land sale or not.
So we only do one a year?
We ourselves do one a year.
And, and the state does one a year?
They come, generally come down in August, then they have their own.
Okay, and then there's two notices go out two different times a year for?
We send the delinquent list, the first one we send out is in June, that, that's first going real estate, the next notice to go out are three consecutive Saturdays in October, which, uh, we don't know if that's gonna move out, because they've already extended the one to June, and then we have a purchase list for that in December, generally. If everything goes, if they don't change the schedule and anything, except for the June first, then everything should happen, should send in the first list out in June, three in October, and then the purchase list will be sent out.
Good luck. It's a moving target, that's for sure.
Well, hopefully, I mean, the, the link and list running in June really doesn't affect anything, um, because we generally don't do the certified letters until, um, June anyway, end of June, July, to get them out by September, sometimes we get them out as early as, um, September first, second, um, it just might move those down a couple of days, but it still gives us plenty of time, because we have to have them out thirty days before the sale, and the, the list just has to run three consecutive, uh, weeks before the sale, so as long as they don't move everything down too far, I mean, it's, you still get time if they don't move anything.
Thank you.
All right, now we want you to brainstorm on how to keep track of those common areas, and tell us how, what your plan is, and next time we bring you over.
I'll do that.
All right, thanks. All right, so we're done with the bomber.
I'll continue on that, um, actually, Mr. Bentley and I had this discussion about this last week, and a question, I was going to kinda hang on to a few percent, if they have not, uh, conveyed it over the HOA, we weren't, I wasn't sure if that was officially possible, and that's why I brought up a council, as to whether I can legitimately hang on to some of the bond until they really do that.
I was thinking we weren't doing a bond release until they did do it.
Yeah, I thought that was.
That's what I meant, I, can I actually hang on to that, really was never any, written down anywhere to do that, uh, some renegade engineer just stuck that on there one day.
I don't, I don't think you hang on to it, I think you just deny the bond release until it's done.
Well, it is, question is, if the job is, um, based, do we, anything that the law suggests, because it hasn't, that's a part of the job, mild response, was, though there is a term, I'll put it in regulation, so that everybody knows, assume this was. Why not hold a bond on the Stormwater Management? And it might be a long, unless that be a logistics statement or something.
We get into, uh, the larger developments, may have Red Hill, for example, two stormwater ponds are done, that's all done, that's history, they're out of, but there's still two more to go.
Right.
The one question I brought up was, uh, as long as they have a standing bond on the next phase, next section, um, I need to come up with some verbiage where I can fix that current bond, you know, release phase one, phase two, we can have a rider, we haven't given this to the Home Order Association yet, hang on to it there, that, that's, that's probably where it gets confusing, of the, once, once and done, it's, it's great.
So, so you're not looking at the stormwater, and I get, you're saying phases, but the stormwater, in my opinion, in a subdivision should be looked at as a whole, because the whole, the ditches, the, the multiple ponds, everything controls the stormwater, so if the stormwater is, is completed to fifty percent, and those common areas are released, then you only go fifty percent release on that, not, not a hundred percent for one section, because, um.
But the, yes, uh, but we do have standalone, where you actually, one flowing off of Mississippi, one flowing off to the Chesapeake, in that particular situation, it's, it can standalone, the subdivision could even stop at that point.
And, and I get that, but I, I don't think, I don't think if it's created and approved as a whole, the subdivision, um, that the stormwater management is created as a whole as well, so.
That may be the out.
Yeah, so, so to look at a section that's going this way, and a section that's going this way, I think is the wrong way to look at it, I think you look at it as a. I think you look at it as a whole. Oh, I get it. That gives them encourage to, that encourages them to go ahead and get them heated and turned over and finished.
At least, uh, we need to hold, fix something to it.
Right.
Whether, and then we have a writer, five percent of that first phase hangs with phase two until it finally does get conveyed over. Now, the other good thing about what's happening now is MS four requires every stormwater basin to have an easement recorded. So now, even if somebody thought they had something, there is that easement appixed to it and they're now responsible for it. And I give that up real quick once they get a fine from, uh.
Censoring, not now, censoring, can you do those?
Right, right, right. That's, that's the fix there, that's part of the fix.
Yeah.
Well.
Just being working with counsel will give the, in the next ordinance.
Just another thought, it could be contingent upon turning it over to the HOA means part of federal release of the bond. Once it's turned over to the HOA or then a federal release.
And I, I phrase that wrong. We are taxing.
They just disper.
Distributed.
Right. Actually, it's been turned over.
There's like, there's a area.
Okay. All right, thank you, Derek. All right, we also have a cancel check, uh, uh, request to stop.
Mr. President, please.
Which one?
The first one, Main Street Marcus Burger, check number zero, six nine two. That would say, first, this is first. And, yeah, it should be, see, five main street. Uh, we did get a call from, and Lewis asked me, I received it.
Okay.
If you could.
And, uh.
All right, so. Motion? Um, just. Remove it?
All right, so, intercanate motion to remove stop payment, uh, check request for check number zero, three, two, six, nine, two for Main Street Marcus Burger, thousand two hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all, they would say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we also have a stop payment check for one, two, zero, three, nine, one, two, zero, five, one for Mary, Mary Street Rentals LLC. One of them for a hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents, one of them for eighty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. That will, that request is still, uh, on the agenda, so that, that one will go through. I'm sorry?
They are not stopping because they are just.
Wait a check, I'm sorry. All right, that's exactly what says, Ms. Joel.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. If, uh, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all, they would say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, Mr. S is not in front of us with any, uh, changes on the books. Uh, important meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
The only, uh, meeting I had was the Calamond, which was on the phone, but I actually hate.
Arden.
Oh, my God.
Can't read people's faces over a phone.
No, you cannot. And you can't even tell who's calling, you know? Like, what? So, short meeting, thank God. And I did point two new people to the Calamond board, which I didn't really work on, it was like, I don't know. And, uh, so I'll just go with that.
All right. Some people are struggling more than others with this whole.
Let me get to talk about struggling, Mr. Dojai. I'm trying to work with Chad on setting up, uh, is that what they call it? For landmarks and, and all this other stuff and, and then he says, I think, he says, anyway, all you have to do is put on the link and this is what happens and, and all, I hate the line, all you have to do is.
Uh-huh.
And I have been fighting with blank screens and everything else, but we're going to get there. Anyhow.
It's that all you have to do problem.
Yes, the all you have to do problem. Uh, that the, uh, met with Dick Klein, uh, this week regarding the roundhouse, they needed the structural designs that had been previously got, uh, done for the roundhouse to make sure that we're meeting all the codes that we have to. And I went through the records and turned them, found them and turned around, Mr. Klein. The good news is the trusses are laying there and there's concrete block on the dag on foundation up there on one whole, uh, one, one corner, got an L to it.
What?
The bathrooms.
What is it?
The concrete block and it, it's on the foundation, so we have an L, uh, building starting, so it's only.
That's good.
It's about, uh, uh, contractor out of, uh, Pennsylvania. But, uh, so that was, we worked on that this week. Uh, big deal, was setting up our landmarks meeting, um, and then I worked with Matt Collenex, working on the evaluation for the MPO for the next meeting. And, um, I called a number of recreational facilities in the state of West Virginia. I'll fill this report later on that, so, thank you.
All right. Mr. President?
Um, I didn't have any meetings this week.
All right. Twitter.
Sir, we had another public, uh, planning commission meeting with one public hearing. No other participants than the ones that were required to be there, asked to be there for, uh, their projects. It was, it was smooth, but, uh, I still think that, you know, the struggle is, is the lack of a public as a more concern. We had, uh, court lit again. We talked about this.
Good, good. Um, didn't have an official board meetings, but actually, as you get my, obviously in contact with the current from the health department, what's going on in the governor's office and things of that nature with COVID-19. But, uh, with that, everything going, oh, kind of speak back to some type of diplomacy. Um, but we got some board commissioners vacancies or do we have any appointments or anything like that?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, reappoint Tana Burkert for the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport Authority.
Second.
Question been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all, they would say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Do that one for me.
Uh, Adam Mock to the fire board?
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion?
You can stay there, you can just stay for that. Um, all right, so we have, uh, Bush on board for Adam Mock to be on fire board and Tracy, this would be an appointment to fill, uh, the vacancy that Dan Petrie has, Dan, what ran out, I think, months ago, so he's going to fill in the, uh, the remainder of the term. Dan, okay? Um, so, before we have a second, any other discussion? If not, all, they would say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I abstain.
All right.
Do you have any more positions on that board?
Fireboard? Not right now. We got one coming up from the, from the public side, not, not right now.
Not yet.
All right, um, we're ahead of schedule. Um, there's Connect, I have some.
That's, that's all about timing right there.
Perfect.
Don't sit down?
No, come on forward. We are. Next on our agenda is Connect Petrie, fiduciary supervisor, state account for the month of May thirty-sixth still.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not used to you guys being so spread out.
I'm sitting up here trying to sign paperwork over to Dan, he don't see it, so I gotta push it a little bit further.
Uh, yeah, yeah, kind of throw it, make it an airplane.
We need, we need one of those grabbers, should I, we just reach them across?
I have a couple of them, so if you need one, I can bring it in for you because I'm pretty short. Um, first of all, before we get started, if, if I could just express my appreciation from the fiduciary office staff for everything that you guys are doing during this COVID-19 pandemic to keep them safe and paid and working, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. It's, it's, uh, it's, sometimes it's, it's some, uh, very challenging times, that's for sure, isn't it, Mr. Davis?
It is, I think for all of us.
There's definitely a lot happening behind the scenes that, uh, public doesn't see, that's for sure.
And, and can't appreciate because they don't see it.
Right.
And, you know, there's a lot of pressure on them too. Everybody's kind of going through a lot of stressful situations, so.
Yeah.
When you have the days when you're, when you're working in a ditch and you're away from sidewalk about twenty feet and you just had enough of it that day, you take your phone, just throw it on the sidewalk, you know it's been a bad day.
Exactly, exactly. So you don't have to answer it, right?
You just throw it in the floor of concrete.
There you go.
Done with it.
Yeah. August, huh?
Yeah. Oh, here we go.
All right.
All right. Um, we have thirty-six estates scheduled and thirty-six we're presenting today. First one is Mary Catherine Bowers, Bethel Brown Everhart Chase, Edmund S Cunningham Jr., also known as Edmund S Cunningham, Bonnie Michelle DeGrange, William Lee Dunham, also known as William Dunham, William R Flanagan, Sheila Ann Gibson, Cora Ellen Burt Gilheart, Stephen Michael Flynn Denning, Margaret E. A. Green Lambert, Ruth Ellen Gruber, Christina Harpalis, Anna Belle Henson, also known as Anna V. Henson, John Russell Hesseman, Patricia Ann Hall, Alberta F. Ives, Mary Ruth James, also known as Mary R. James, Edward Lee Jones, also known as Edward L. Jones, an interim settlement for Mary Jane Kubica, Richard E. Mariner, Rosemary Ubank McDonald, also known as Rosemary McDonald, Rosemary McDonald, Goldie Mae McKeever, John Edward McVeigh, also known as Johnny McVeigh, Joanne Palmer Mills, Sidney Wayne Long Jr., Rodney Patrick, Donald Eugene Petrie, Helen Ruth Petrie, Galen E. Richard, Earl Malon Simpson, also known as Earl M. Simpson, Mildred Irene Taylor, Claire Reed Olery, Ronald Lee Ware, Kathleen V. Weisenberg, Charles Edward Wines, and Judy Rowe.
All right, anybody have any questions for Ms. Petrie on the states?
Do not.
If not, I will make a, make a statement that, uh, one of the names that you called out, John McVeigh, was a wonderful writer for the Journal for many, many years and, and, uh, just a wonderful man. It, it, it's great when you, you know, early on in your political career, you have differences and you get to know each other and you learn to appreciate each other's viewpoints. John was one of those people.
Mm-hmm.
Sadly missed and, uh, greatly respected by many, so.
I totally agree and he was in, it was, uh, it was always an enjoyable conversation with John.
Absolutely.
Bring up the history of something.
Yeah, it was a sad day when he passed, so.
I tend to think, uh, think the numbers, uh, being they had, there's a lot of stories that, uh, we have stories, but there was a whole lot of stories going back a lot of years of the things that he accomplished and, and all his interests and did a lot of writing on the side, I think like a poetry or something, and had some stuff that was at Shepherd, so most people weren't aware of that and I wasn't, so. And I always liked John because we get into a good, uh, discussion, historical facts or fiction, whichever way it came out.
Right. He, he did an article on me when I did the restaurant, when I started the renovation of the restaurant and it was actually in the New York Times at one point.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Was it because of the quality of the, of the writing or the quality of the person?
I have no idea. But it was, it was picked up by the state, it was the state, the state paper and then it was, it made it to the New York Times at one point. So I was like, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, John, John was a, a very good person.
Disconnection for pretty deep.
Yeah. Totally, totally friendship.
I reminded that on the second question to the states.
Month of May? May. All right.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all, they would say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and you have no hearings to be scheduled.
No hearings to be scheduled.
All right. Thank you and let your staff know that we appreciate everything they're going to. All right, we do have a hearing after break, so see you in a couple minutes. All right. Yeah. (applause)
Welcome up, fellas.
It's true.
Yeah. We're back in session. Um, and that Petri, we had a state hearing for Ruth Cane Hernan and Mr. Bentley, you have an order for us, I believe?
I did have an order. They, uh, they found the original will. Uh, so the need for the hearing has been mooted and the order dismisses the petition.
Okay.
I'll tender to you, but we need to, need to have a motion that dismisses the matter as moot and authorize the president to sign.
The petition for the estate.
Ruth Cane Hernan.
Ruth Cane, there it is. The petition to probate the will and so, uh, through by, uh, present, uh, assembly and then the, uh, president.
Question been made, seconded any discussion? Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. Um, I'll come back to a little bit about board meeting reports, if you don't mind, real quick. Um, I didn't have any board meeting reports, but I did talk to John from the Land and Water, um, Division on, in the state of West Virginia. And, um, also talked to John Hardy on the additional transfer money that's coming back to the, to the county, starting with 10% a year for the next 10 years, on some things with the Parks and Rec. Um, so one of the things John and I talked about, he sent, what triggered that was he sent, sent us a, sent me a letter, basically purring to us to move forward with the purchase. But at the same time, also said that, you know, as Mr. Davis will say, assume that we are a wealthy county because we are a big county. Um, so first thing is, I went back, same thing that we always do, let, let everybody know, just because we're, our budget might be large, our, our needs are greater, and by per capita, we're the 10th poorest in the state of West Virginia. Um, and then further on, talked about land acquisitions, uh, which they do have grant money, which could be up to a 50% match on any purchase of, of, of green space for parks. Um, but one of the things, as criteria on that is also that it's, it, you have a certain amount of set time to develop the park, or the land into a park. Um, so it's not just purchase the property, you also have to have money to actually develop it into a park. Now, it could be trails, it could be, you know, there's all kinds of different things you can do. But there is another portion of that to where there's another process you can take for land acquisition. Um, there's also, one of the things, you don't have to actually purchase it to actually, uh, get the money designated, uh, you just have to start the paperwork and have, um, they can, they can encumber the funds for a, a negotiated and ratified contract in the future. I'm sure it's not, it's got to be in a timely manner. So, uh, John said that he would give us some talking points and, and, and do that, but one of the things is, not only are you purchasing the property, but you have to have a plan, as we talked about, on how you're going to develop it, how you're going to pay to get it further developed. Um, so, so I had that conversation with John, um, and...
You're talking about two Johns.
No, that's John from the Land and Water.
Yeah, I am.
Right. I'm, I'm, no, it's just the one John.
The other John was John Hardy you were talking about.
Oh, you're right.
You're referencing two Johns.
I was trying to think where, you know, where I left off here. Um, I talked to John Hardy this other day and asked him, I said, I said, you know, Steve Cowan, as much as I love him, I love him to death, is, is, is presuming that, that the transfer money's coming back to Berkeley County, you, you, uh, were dedicating, or earmarking, thank you Jim, to, to give out money to Parks and Rec. And, and, and I know that you and I talked about those conversations about getting that money back to the county as well. And so we both had the, the understanding that, no, that wasn't a committed of funds to the Park and Rec, because I told him that we're going to start working on that, I think it's on the agenda for next week, on, on what we're going to do, that extra allocation. And I also talked to John from the Land and Water, that on good years, that could be a million dollars plus. On bad years, it could be $30,000, because during the recession, we already brought in a hundred and some thousand dollars on that. Or less, I'm sorry, less than a hundred new homes, where on a good year, we're doing over 1,100 new addresses. Um, and so John, John basically said, no, there's, there's no, no, did I expect some money to go to Parks and Rec? Yes. How much, or a percentage of how much? I never had that conversation. Or he never intended to be a setup now. So, um, and, and, but he did expect some of it to go to them. So, uh, I told John from the Land and Water, that, you know, we want to make sure any, anything that we do, we can afford to pay for it. So more than likely, the plan that we'll develop is, we can set money to aside when we have the funds to do it, we can make the purchase. Um, so that's the, that kind of falls in with what we've talked about, for, you know, trying to improve the quality of life in Berkeley County and...
And I also had a call, call from one of the board members to ask me, you know, where, um, where I stood on it and what the thought process was. And I, and I told him, um, basically the same thing we discussed, is that there's got to be a plan, there's got to be a plan put in place to, to describe not only how you're going to pay for something after you purchase, but a plan put in place to, uh, you know, when Steve comes in front of us, yeah, I, every, every time he comes in front of us, he, he mentions, uh, parks and property needed in the north and the south, and what the plan is to acquire properties, and how that's going to be funded, and how it's going to be developed, and, and what it's going to be developed in. Um, you know, maybe in the north end that needs a ballpark or something, I don't, you know, I, I don't know that, but if, if they're going to put a plan together, then, you know, then we can judge our successes, or, or how much allocation that's going to be, by how, uh, how it's going to, uh, or how much it's going to require to make it happen, you know, over a period of time. And the gentleman I spoke with was totally fine with that. He thought that made sense.
Yeah, and I'll call Mr. Rickert back myself, too, he left a message for me, oh, or he left a message for me, and I just, he called me at dinnertime, going to my dinner that day.
Well, I'm glad you spoke with him.
Hi.
Yeah, I think we all did. So, all right, um, I just wanted to...
Yeah, I mean, give you this, they do have that passion, and I mean, I'll give credit where credit's due. Steve does, do a phenomenal job with the money. Gets 20 cents, and he used to make about three or four dollars out of it, or he can. Still, we, we have obligations to the whole county, and make sure that we meet those obligations and see what...
And plus, with the COVID-19 going on, we don't know what that's going to be.
That's what I, that's what I relate, I think, uh, we even touched on the purchase price of it, it's an astronomical price for a piece of property, and, you know, if there's going to be a appraisal done, then we'll pay more than what we're paying.
That's exactly right. Oh, John from the Land and Water. All right, Mr. Davis, uh, you're next on the agenda, fully health insurance renewal for 2020-21?
You know, it's that time of year where we have discussions regarding our, um, health insurance benefits for Berkeley County employees, the employees of the fire board, and the ambulance authority, and the development authority for next fiscal year. Um, I've been doing benefit administration for about 40 years now.
Start at 10, I'll tell you age.
It is, start at 10, and I'm starting to feel it. Um, I can say, and, and I'm going to ask Penny to, um, participate in this discussion when she feels it's necessary. Um, this has been probably one of the most difficult benefit renewals that I've ever been through in Berkeley, the most difficult benefit renewal since I've been with Berkeley County. Um, we actually, I guess, August or September of last year, um, early into this policy period, um, we do receive regular reports from Highmark West Virginia, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and, um, early on in the policy period, we were concerned, um, about some of the trending of our, of our claims, which we'll talk a little bit more, more about. So, uh, Penny and I, and representatives of, uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and Gibson Associates actually started meeting, um, late summer, early fall last year, to talk about our claims, um, and to develop a strategy for, um, in, in case our claims deterioration continued, um, and we had to make some, some changes, or at least recommend some changes. And unfortunately, um, over the course of time, in fact, um, even today, our claims experience continues to deteriorate. Coupled with that has been the fact that, um, you know, negotiations with some of the ancillary benefits, MetLife, Vision, and Dental went fairly well, although they were delayed a little bit, because as those companies, the underwriters for those companies were putting the final numbers together, um, in March, of course, COVID-19 hit, so then they were scattered to the wind. So, um, it took a little bit of effort on their part to get some of the numbers together. Um, I had scheduled a time to spend a full day at, um, the headquarters of Highmark West Virginia, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, to further negotiate our claims, our renewal in March, uh, which of course was canceled. Um, so we, we did do a teleconference, um, and come to you today with what I think is, um, some, some, some feasible options. And then you throw on top of that the uncertainty of what our revenue stream is going to be next year. Um, so what I would like to do...
Talked about land acquisitions, uh, which they do have grant money, which could be up to a fifty percent match on any purchase of, of, of green space for parks. Um, but one of the things as criteria on that is also that it's, it, you have a certain amount of set time to develop the park or the land into a park. Um, so it's not just purchase the property, you also have to have money to actually develop it into a park. Now, it could be trails, it could be, you know, there's all kinds of different things you can do, but there is another portion of that to where there's another process you can take for land acquisition. Um, there's also, one of the things, you don't have to actually purchase it to actually, uh, get the money designated, uh, you just have to start the paperwork and have, um, they can, they can encumber the funds for a, a negotiated and ratified contract in the future. I'm sure it's not, it's gotta be in a timely manner. So, uh, John said that he would give us some talking points and, and, and do that, but one of the things is not only are you purchasing the property, but you have to have a plan, as we talked about, on how you're going to develop it, how you're going to pay to get it further developed. Um. So, so I had that conversation with John, um, and.
You're talking about two Johns.
That was what, uh, what, what, uh. No, that's John from Land and Water.
Yeah, I am.
Right, I'm, 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 no, it's just the one John.
The other John was John Hardy you were talking about.
Oh, you're right.
You're referencing two Johns.
I was trying to think where, you know, where I left off here. Um, I talked to John Hardy this other day and asked him, I said, I said, you know, Steve Cowan, as much as I love him, I love him to death, is, is, is presuming that, that the transfer money's coming back to Burke County, you, you, uh, were.
Earmarked.
Dedicating or earmarking, thank you Jim, to, to give out money to Parks and Rec. And, and, and I know that you and I talked about those conversations about getting that money back to the county as well. And so we both had the, the understanding that, no, that wasn't a committed funds to the Park and Rec, because I told him that we're going to start working on that, I think it's on the agenda for next week on, on what we're going to do with that extra allocation. And I also talked to John from the, uh, Land and Water that on good years, that could be a million dollars plus. On bad years, it could be thirty thousand dollars, because during the recession, we already brought in a hundred and some thousand dollars on that. Or less, I'm sorry, less than a hundred new homes, where on a good year, we're doing over eleven hundred new addresses. Um, and so John, John basically said, no, there's, there's no, no, did I expect some money to go to Parks and Rec? Yes. How much or a percentage of how much? I never had that conversation. Or he never intended to be a setup now, so, um, and, and, but he did expect some of it to go to them, so, uh, I told John from the, uh, Land and Water that, you know, we want to make sure any, anything that we do, we can afford to pay for it. So more than likely, the plan that we'll develop is, we can set money to aside when we have the funds to do it, we can make the purchase. Um, so, that's the, that kind of falls in with what we've talked about for, you know, trying to improve the quality of life in Burke County and.
And I also had a call, call from one of the board members to ask me, you know, where, um, where I stood on it and what the thought process was, and I, and I told him, um, basically the same thing we discussed, is that there's got to be a plan, there's gotta be a plan put in place to, to describe not only how you're going to pay for something after you purchase, but a plan put in place to, uh, you know, when Steve comes in front of us, yeah, on every, every time he comes in front of us, he, he mentions, uh, parks and property needed in the north and the south, and what the plan is to acquire properties and how that's going to be funded, and how it's going to be developed, and, and what it's going to be developed in, um, you know, maybe in the north end that needs a ballpark or something, I don't, you know, I, I don't know that, but if, if they're going to put a plan together, then, you know, then we can judge our successes or, or how much allocation that's going to be by how, uh, how it's going to, uh, or how much it's going to require to make it happen, you know, over a period of time. And the, the gentleman I spoke with was totally fine with that, he thought that made sense.
Yeah, and I'll call Mr. Rickert back myself too, he left a message for me, oh, or he left a message for me and I just, he called me at dinner time, going to my dinner that day.
Well, I'm glad you spoke with him.
Hi.
Yeah, I think we all did, so, all right, um, I just wanted to.
Yeah, my day forever.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
I mean, give you this, they do have that passion, and I mean, I'll give credit where credit's due, Steve does do a phenomenal job with the money. Gets twenty cents and he uses to make about three or four dollars out of it, or he can. Still, we, we have obligations to the whole county, and make sure that we meet those obligations and see what.
And, and plus with the COVID nineteen going on, we don't know what that's going to be.
That's what I, that's what I relate, I think, uh, even touched on the purchase price of it, it's an astronomical price for a piece of property, and, you know, if there's going to be a appraisal done, then we'll pay more than what we're paying.
That's exactly right, old John from Land and Water. All right, Mr. Davis, uh, you're next on the agenda, fully health insurance renewal for two thousand twenty, twenty-one?
You know, it's that time of year where we have discussions regarding our, um, health insurance benefits for Burke County employees, the employees of the Fire Board and the Ambulance Authority and the Development Authority for next fiscal year. Um, I've been doing benefit administration for about forty years now.
Start to tell, tell your age.
It is, starting then, and I'm starting to feel it. Um, I can say, and, and, and I'm going to ask Penny to, um, participate in this discussion when she feels it's necessary. Um, this has been probably one of the most difficult benefit renewals that I've ever been through in Berkeley, the most difficult benefit renewal since I've been with Berkeley County. Um, we actually, I guess, August or September of last year, um, early into this policy period, um, we do receive regular reports from Highmark West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield, and, um, early on in the policy period, we were concerned, um, about some of the trending of our, of our claims, which we'll talk a little bit more, more about. So, uh, Penny and I and representatives of, uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Gibson Associates actually started meeting, um, late summer, early fall last year to talk about our claims, um, and to develop a strategy for, um, in, in case our claims deterioration continued, um, and we had to make some, some changes, or at least recommend some changes. And unfortunately, um, over the course of time, in fact, um, even today, our claims experience continues to deteriorate. Coupled with that has been the fact that, um, you know, negotiations with some of the ancillary benefits, MetLife, Vision and Dental went fairly well, although they were delayed a little bit because as those companies, the underwriters for those companies were putting the final numbers together, um, in March, of course, COVID nineteen hit, so then they were scattered to the wind. So, um, it took a little bit of effort on their part to get some of the numbers together. Um, I had scheduled a time to spend a full day at, um, the headquarters of Highmark West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield to further negotiate our claims, uh, our renewal in March, uh, which of course was canceled. Um, so we, we did do a teleconference, um, and come to you today with what I think is, um, some, some, some feasible options. And then you throw on top of that the uncertainty of what our revenue stream is going to be next year. Um, so what I would like to do, and what I think we can do, may be different things. Um, so, you know, always will approach our benefits renewal with caution, um, but I think this year I'm approaching it maybe even with an abundance of caution, only because I want to make sure our employees are treated fairly, I want to make sure that our benefits are, um, equal to or maybe even a little bit better than what, um, similar employers of our size can provide, um, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we can afford what, what we provide. So having said that, I'll go through quick, as quickly as possible, this, this, actually your read has about seven pages, which is typically, or is much longer than what I, what I typically provide you, but I wanted to, to lay out as much information as possible so that, um, you can make a decision on the direction that you want to take our benefits. Um, as I said, um, we have been working on these renewals now for, uh, over six months. Uh, the first page, you're provided with the table of our current benefits, uh, the group term life insurance, we do provide thirty thousand dollars of group term life insurance to our employees, thirty thousand dollars worth of AD and D, and also, uh, offer the availability of dependent life insurance, uh, we offer vision through vision service plan, uh, dental through Delta Dental, uh, health insurance is currently through Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, West Virginia, with a five hundred dollar deductible, a fifteen hundred dollar deductible, a five thousand dollar deductible and, uh, a three thousand dollar high deductible HSA. You can see that, and we'll get into more detail as we go further into the discussion, um, what the proposed renewal rates are if we do nothing. MetLife, um, essentially has said, and, and our experience under MetLife has been very, very favorable, however, because, uh, of the difficulty in getting all their underwriting information together, um, instead of a two-year contract, and, and certainly not knowing what COVID nineteen's going to do with mortality tables, um, rates, even, even health insurance. Uh, MetLife has only agreed to a one-year contract with a zero percent increase. A vision service plan, our experience has been very favorable, um, so they did offer a two-year contract with a one point one eight percent decrease for employee coverage and a one point one five percent decrease in family, and Delta Dental, uh, has agreed to a two-year contract with a zero percent increase, and again, talk a little bit about each one of those areas of coverage, uh, uh, very, very soon. Highmark West Virginia, if we maintain the current levels of coverage that we have now, with the five hundred, the fifteen hundred dollar and the five thousand dollar, um, deductible and the three thousand dollar HSA, you can see that, um, we've actually negotiated down the premium increase, um, to seventeen point five two percent for the standard coverage and twenty-two point three four percent for the, for the HSA, and again, I'll get into more detail soon. Uh, term life insurance, uh, as I mentioned, is with MetLife, uh, it has been enforced in September first of two thousand three, uh, they have, uh, for the current two-year contract, uh, that expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty, we did receive a five percent increase in the employee basic life insurance only rate, uh, but did not receive an increase in the basic AD and D rate, uh, or the, uh, dependent life insurance rate. Um, that was actually the first premium increase that we had since the inception, uh, which was almost fifteen years ago, and that increase was, uh, supported by an adverse three-year loss experience. Uh, although our claims experience has been favorable, again, as I mentioned, because of COVID nineteen, MetLife only agreed to a one-year contract at the current premium three six thirty twenty-one. Uh, vision service, again, has agreed to a two-year contract for the period seven one twenty twenty through six thirty twenty-one, with a ten cent, uh, decrease in the per month, per employee, a premium and a twenty-two cent per month decrease in family coverage, and again, Delta Dental, uh, has agreed to a two-year contract, seven one twenty twenty through six thirty twenty twenty-two, uh, at the current rates. We have not had a premium increase from Delta Dental since the, uh, fiscal year fourteen fifteen, so our experience continues to be very, very good with them, and they're, they're a good provider, and Penny handles the day to, um, today, day-to-day activity, particularly as it, um, deals with customer servicing claims, and I think she would agree that, uh, MetLife, uh, VSP and Del, uh, Delta Dental all do a good job for our employees. We have very, very few, uh, claims questions or claims problems, um, with either, with any of those providers. Um, I have reached out to, uh, the West Virginia Association of Counties and the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, uh, who both offer group vision and dental plans, uh, from different vendors, um, to see how our premiums, uh, although there's some, some differences in coverages, our, our coverage is actually a little bit better, um, than either one of the packages offered by them, but, uh, curious as to see how our VSP and Delta Dental premiums, uh, compare to what they offer, uh, and you can see that, uh, based on the comparison, and I have gotten, uh, confirmation from both Jonathan and Jennifer, um, of these , uh, premium rates that we still, uh, our premium levels are still below, uh, those packages offer through the West Virginia Association of Counties or the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia. So therefore, uh, we are recommending that the group term life insurance, uh, AD and D vision and dental coverage all be renewed as, uh, listed above with no changes in coverage. Health insurance is, is the one that will require some discussion and a decision. Um, if you will recall, uh, about five years ago, we eliminated the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, uh, under Highmark West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield, and added a five thousand dollar deductible plan. We also went through, from the two-card, uh, process that we use with standard life insurance as our stopgap insurer, and moved to an HRA arrangement, um, with, uh, Highmark West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that arrangement has worked exceptionally well. Um, Highmark administers the HRA, um, at no cost to, to us, um, we work with them to try to actuarially determine how much money we have to have, uh, in reserve, because, um, we truly only have one plan with Highmark West Virginia, and that's the five thousand deductible plan, um, which we, which we fund. Um, we then pretty much self-insure the amount from the, the deductible, in this case, the, the five hundred, the fifteen hundred, uh, and the five hundred and fifteen hundred dollars deductible, we self-insure the difference between the deductible and the, um, the five thousand dollar, the HRA deductible or, and the, and the deductible with Highmark West Virginia. Um, that has worked, again, exceptionally well over the course of the, of the past five years. Um, the advantage to this plan that it has allowed our employees to return to a one-card system, um, it's, uh, the Highmark West Virginia card, if you have the five hundred dollar HRA, it shows up on the card as a five hundred dollar deductible plan, so, um, for the purposes of, uh, most providers, um, they only see the deductible, and, um, every once in a while, there's a little hiccup with the claims where they go into the system to verify coverage, and they'll say, oh, you, you have the five thousand dollar, you have a five thousand dollar deductible, and they say, no, I have a five hundred dollar HRA, and it, you know, sometimes Penny and, and Cody from Highmark West Virginia has to get involved, but it's pretty easily, um, taken care of. Uh, in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, uh, eighteen, we added the fourth health insurance plan, which is our three thousand dollar deductible health savings account. Um, this account does qualify as a high deductible plan under IRS regulations, and allows our employees to pay qualified medical expenses through a health savings account. Uh, once this, under this plan, once the appropriate deductibles have been met, qualified expenses are paid at a hundred percent rather than eighty percent, uh, which is what the previous three plans do if you're in that work. So, to bring you where we're at now, um, it is recommended that we maintain the employer-funded HRA currently being administered by Highmark West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield at no cost, that's pretty much a, a no-brainer. Uh, our health insurance, uh, continues and will continue to be our most expensive and volatile portion of our employee benefits program. Uh, as you know, um, this council has done a very, very good job over the years of getting our, uh, employees' compensation levels, um, up to market, uh, in, in many, many areas, and we continue to, to, to do a good job with that, therefore, uh, turnover is relatively low compared to where it was ten years ago, um, so it's a situation where the good news is our turnover is low, or the bad news is our turnover is low. So if you look at the overall demographics of our workforce, um, we're all getting older. And as our workforce ages, as, 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 as the average age within our workforce gets older, of course, you see more, um, more of the age-related illnesses, um, as it pertains to, um, cardiovascular disease, pulmonary disease, uh, and, and things like that. We have been very deliberate, uh, in our attempts to introduce measures to counter our aging workforce through cost savings, and it has been effective over the years. Um, in fiscal year sixteen seventeen, we did have a premium reduction of, premium reductions of between three and four point three one percent. Uh, in sixteen seventeen, we actually saw a reduction again of three point eight, or seventeen eighteen, we had a reduction of three point eight percent. Eighteen nineteen, there was no premium increase, and in nineteen twenty, we did sustain a slight increase of three percent for the Super Blue Plus twenty ten plan and a ten point three seven percent increase, increase in our HSA. As I said, we have been closely monitoring, um, our claims experience, um, we actually asked, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, which they agreed to do, um, to extend, um, the period, um, they had given us renewal a month or so ago, we asked them to extend the period of our, of, of actually issuing the final renewal to see whether, uh, our claims experience would be trending, uh, more favorably, in the hopes that they would take that into consideration and maybe saying, okay, um, the increased claims were an anomaly, um, almost like COVID, it's, it's now peaked and it's starting to, to trend down, uh, unfortunately, that was not the case. Our claims experience for the current policy period, uh, is at ninety-three point three one percent, which is an increase above the last, uh, fiscal year, uh, which was eighty-seven point seven eight percent. Um, resulting in an initial proposed renewal increase of seventeen point five two percent for the Super Blue Plus two thousand plan, uh, which is the five thousand dollar deductible HRA plan, uh, on which the five hundred HRA and the fifteen hundred HRA base, and twenty-two point three four percent for the three thousand dollar H R, HSA plan.
So, Mr. Davis, if, if I can, so our exposure rate goes up seven to eight percent, seven to eight percent, but yet our increase is seventeen point five to twenty-three, two point three, how, how do they explain that?
Well, it's based, it's actuarially determined based on our.
The trend?
Our trending, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, the health insurance claims deterioration is being driven in, and they, for all intent and purposes, once, and, and Jim can hopefully verify this, once you get above eighty-five percent in your claims history, the companies actually start to lose money. So not only are they trying to take into account the adverse claims and the, the adverse financial impact that this year had on their book of business, but also what they anticipate, um, continued deterioration of claims will, will be. Um, and it's, again, it's all actuarially determined based on, um, you know, the morbidity tables that they have in place, the number of male and female participants that we have, the number of children that we have, um, the number of employees in its group by age and, and, and a number of other things.
And the odd cost of healthcare.
And the overall cost of healthcare.
Yeah, so I mean, if it went up six percent from last year, then they're probably assuming that you're going to have a similar increase next year, which is going to put us almost at a hundred percent for, in order for them to make any profit, they've gotta, um, they've gotta add the percentage of the cost to it in order to get back in that bracket.
Our health insurance premium for the period under review that came in, um, as part of our, when they did our renewal, was two million one thirty two oh thirteen, and they paid out a million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is the ninety-three point three one percent.
So what's our premium, two million what?
Two million one hundred and thirty-two thousand thirteen dollars. Now, as we kind of dug into our claims, um, some, some things that, that came to light that, um, is really driving our, uh, our renewal, um, of the one million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars in claims, total claims, um, and that includes hospitalization, doctor visits, so on and so forth, our employees incurred seven hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars in prescriptions.
Wow.
So forty percent of our total claims, um, is for specialty and other high-cost prescriptions, which is, oh, driving our overall pharmacy, or pharmacy costs. Uh, increases in high-cost claims, which are claimants over twenty-five thousand dollars, um, have largely driven, um, the spikes in the claim cost, um, it actually represents about thirty-six percent of all medical claims currently paid by the plan. Um, there are a number of employees that, of course, can't be identified through, because of HIPAA regulations, that have been identified as having high-risk prevalence or chronic diseases, which are anticipated to continue to adversely affect, um, the health insurance in the future, and, uh, and we, we talked about this last year, and unfortunately, the trend continues, uh, employees continue to use the emergency room for non-emergency purposes, uh, rather than go to urgent care or calling their family pharmacy or physician on Monday, they go to the emergency room for non-emergency conditions.
We addressed that last year.
We did, and we actually increased the co-pay.
Right.
Um, and it still has not slowed it down.
I'm sure it's slowed it down now, because they've, they've had record, um, over this last couple of months, they've had record low numbers of people actually using the, um, the, uh, emergency.
Right.
Yeah, and using the, the phone call-in and those type of things, I think, you know, this is, this is a, something we talked about a couple of years ago, and I said this very thing was going to happen with all these lawsuits against pharmaceutical companies, that once you sue them, the only choice they have to recoup the cost is to raise prescription costs.
Thing about that is, is, the flip side of that is that we're, we're not part of the lawsuit, our costs are going to go up and we don't have any money coming in.
Right. Well, again, because of HIPAA regulations, we, we don't know the participants, we don't want to know the participants, but we do have one participant in the program whose prescription drug cost for one person during this policy period was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars, which represents eighteen percent of our total prescription cost, one participant.
Over eleven thousand dollars a month.
Hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Oof, wow.
Yeah, the 30-day supply runs up. Well, there's two different drugs. One has a 30-day cost of $7,908, and the other one, which is a different drug, has a 30-day cost of $7,576.
Should be criminal for the people that make it.
So.
Yeah, that's just on, it don't cost that kind of money to make.
So, having said all of that, and I think Penny will attest that we've done pretty much the best that we could do with Highmark West Virginia. If no changes are made to the plan, our monthly health insurance premium will increase on average, based on the current participation levels, from $182,138 to $214,285.
There's a difference on that.
Annual increase of $385,764 for health insurance.
$385,764.
So therefore, we're recommending, or we're offering, the following for your consideration to be effective July 1st. I think it's generally acknowledged that a $500 individual and $1,000 family deductible is still very, very generous and low. It's below standard. It's below average. In fact, Highmark West Virginia's book of business has an average individual deductible between $1,200 and about $2,000. So a $500 deductible is very, very low. We currently have 304 participants in our health insurance. Those are participants that are actively enrolled. We do have 72 employees that have opted out and taken compensation, and one employee that's opted out and taken the additional vacation. But of the 304 participants, 382 are under the $500 deductible, 13 employees are under the $1,500 deductible HRA, six are under the $5,000 deductible Super Blue Plus 2010 Plan, and we have three participants, I'm sorry, six, yes, three participants in the HSA. We're offering for your consideration that we change the $500 deductible plan, the $500 $1,000 deductible plan, to a $750 $1,500 plan, HRA deductible, that we leave the $1,500 $3,000 deductible, HRA deductible plan in place, that we increase the $5,000 $10,000 plan to a $7,500 individual $1,500 family deductible. Total maximum out-of-pocket currently under the HRA, or the Super Blue Plus 2010 Plans is $7,900 per employee, or $15,800 per family. Because of the caps that are put on by the, by federal regulation, the total maximum pocket, out-of-pocket, if you accept the recommendations, would be $8,150 per individual and $16,300 per family. Now, as you consider that, as we looked at last policy period, we only had, of the total number of participants in our Super Blue Plus Plan, we only had 38 participants in the $500 plan, so 38 participants out of 282 enrolled leaves that even met the $500 deductible. No one else met their deductible. Of the other plans, of the 19 employees in the other Super Blue Plus 2010 Plans, five participants met their deductibles. So we had 43 participants, or 14.14% of all the participants in the plan that are really driving our claims experience, because these are the ones that are into the plan far enough where Highmark's now paying claims. So we, 40% of all of our claims are being driven, claims payments are being driven by prescription, and everything else remaining are being affected by 14.14% of the participants. Everyone else has the insurance, they use it for the routine, for routine matters, but they really never get far enough into the plan to really affect the major medical. Under the Qualified High Deductible Plan, as I mentioned, it's currently 3,000 individual, 6,000 family deductible. We are recommending that that plan be increased to a $5,000 individual, $10,000 family deductible. The total maximum out-of-pocket currently is 3,000 individual, 6,000 family, and that would, of course, increase to 5,000 individual, 10,000 family. Proposed changes in benefits, as you, and that would be page five of your handout.
Back up.
Yes, sir.
What's the Super Blue Plus, I'm sorry, Super Blue Plus 2010, a Qualified High Deductible Plan?
Qualified High Deductible Plan is the HSA.
Right.
The Super Blue Plus 2010 Plan is a fully insured plan with a 500 currently, a 500, a 1,500, and a $5,000 deductible. The HSA has, currently has a $3,000 deductible. The difference between those plans is, after you reach your deductible and you're into the major medical, it pays, if you're in-network, the plan pays 80%, and the employee pays 20% until you reach the total maximum out-of-pocket expense. Under the HSA, once you reach your total maximum out-of-pocket expense, and it pays 100% for everything. And that's the advantages of an HSA. You're also putting money on an HSA away to help you pay for your deductible on a pre-tax basis. So there's definitely some tax advantages to the HSA.
And the purpose of the reason for the HSA is to make them think about their actions before they take them.
Right.
Not only that, I mean, if you're going to spend, if you know that you're going to spend that amount of money, you're basically saving yourself 25% of that amount of money by doing the HSA.
Plus, you're putting that money into a pre-tax account, it rolls over from one year to the next, and if the employee ever leaves the county, they take that money with them. It's taxed at the time that they withdraw it from the account.
To be taxed when you need it.
Correct. So, I mean, it's a good, and that's more and more employers, as Lori probably knows, particularly in the private sector, are getting away from the fully insured plan, like the Super Blue Plus 2010, and they're going towards the HSAs. The other, and as I talked to the underwriters at length, particularly in the last probably 30 days, the other unknown with all health insurance companies is, you know, the effect that COVID-19 is going to have on their claims experience. Highmark West Virginia currently has a client in their total book of business where they had a COVID-19 patient that was on a ventilator, and was in a medically-induced coma for about two months in intensive care. You can imagine what that's going to do to that employer's claims experience. It only takes one or two of those. Fortunately, we have not, we have not had, to the best of my knowledge, anyone that's been in that situation.
And PEIA is the option that some county commissioners use, and you and I've had that conversation. The problem with PEIA is, it's pretty much, you're limited to your hospitals and doctors that you can use.
Right. You have to go to, you have to go to, everything has to be in-network. If you go out of network, it's not paid. And as we look at our total, you know, the number of hospitals that, and I do have it in the report here, our employees would be limited to those hospitals that are located in West Virginia. As we look at the top five, the top five inpatient providers, the number one hospital is Winchester Medical Center, which would be out of network.
Out of network.
Out of network. Berkeley Medical would be in-network. Jefferson Medical would be in-network. The fourth most-used hospital is Anova Healthcare in Virginia, and the fifth is Meredith in Hagerstown.
Those are out of network.
They would be out of network.
So basically, WVU is in-network.
WVU, yep.
Please come to the podium, ma'am. I can hear you. Let's start all over again.
Just a side note for the HSA, anybody employee that is, or any employee that is in the HSA and has a debit card, they can continue to use the debit card after they leave the county. They can, they can administer it through Highmark, they just have to pay a small amount of rate to pay to Highmark to keep it, if they want to.
And they actually use that card for, like, prescription drug co-pays and deductibles as well as all physicals.
And just so people know, the cost savings, going from an HRA to HSA, how much on average? I mean, there's different deductibles, so it's kind of hard to say.
Well, you'll see that the HSA, when you look at the premium for the HSA, because it does pay 100%, the deductibles are higher, but if you look at, for example, the proposed increase for the HSA for full family coverage is $1,653.58, that's actually comparable to what you pay for full family coverage under the $1,500 HRA. The difference is the fact that you're paying all of your out-of-pocket expenses with pre-tax dollars. So the deductible's higher, the premium, and the county still has to pay a portion of this, of this premium, but the difference is, the difference is, particularly if you have a medical, let's say I had, you know, Lyme disease, something that I receive routine treatment for that could be, you know, high cost. I could actually, through the HSA, have the money taken off that I think I'm going to incur for medical expenses, put into the HSA on a pre-tax basis, so that as I incur these costs, I pay with it, pay for pre-tax dollars rather than post-tax dollars. So it gives you some predictability for budgeting.
Isn't there a maximum, maximum amount that you can put in that as well?
Yeah, Dan, and I, to be honest with you, and I don't know that, I don't know what that number is, but yes, there is a maximum amount that you can put in there.
What do you think?
No, it's more than that. It's pretty, it's pretty high. Twenty, twenty couple thousand sticks in my head, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't swear to that. It's, you can build up quite a bit.
I can see that. Extremely beneficial to some of those racking up high medical bills, especially the one you're talking about that's doing the, you know, $100,000 worth of prescriptions.
Well, the problem, not the problem, not the problem for the employee.
They're on the hope of the 100%.
The problem for the county is, as it currently stands, there's a $200 deductible co-pay for 30-day supply of the, or I'm sorry, of a 90-day supply of the specialty drug. To get a 34-day supply, the co-pay is actually lower. So the number that I gave you is what, actually what the county is paying out out-of-pocket, what the health plan is paying out out-of-pocket. The out-of-pocket expense to the, to the employee, as a percentage of the total cost of the prescription, is much lower. So if you look at page five, we're, the biggest changes are the changes in the deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums, which we talked about at the bottom of page four. In page five, under the proposed changes, you can see that we're not recommending many changes. The changes are in red. So for example, as you go down the list of primary care visits, specialty office visits, routine adult physicals, adult immunizations, routine gynecological exams, so on and so forth, none of those, none of the proposed changes affects anything if you stay in-network. There's a huge advantage to our claims if an employee stays in-network, only because the in-network provider has to agree to the payment schedule that they have between Highmark and the provider. And it's usually discounted, and that's one of the things that, that Highmark, another advantage that Highmark has over PEIA is because they have the discounted payment schedule. Where the rub comes is where an employee goes out of network, where there are no price controls. So you're seeing that if, you see that we're proposing that if an employee stays in-network, the coverage doesn't change. If the employee goes out of network, right now, the plan pays 60% after the $25 co-pay. We're recommending that for all the services that I previously mentioned, that instead of 60%, that be changed to 50% payment after the $25 co-pay. Again, that's incentive for employees to stay in-network.
Are the specialty hospitals, like John Hopkins and stuff like that, are they in-network?
They're all in-network. Hershey Medical Center, John Hopkins, PMC, the Pittsburgh Medical Center, Anova Fairfax, George Washington, as long as they accept Blue Cross Blue Shield, which the vast majority does, it's all in-network.
If they accept Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're in the network.
It doesn't matter where it is. It can be Capital, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Virginia.
So how many of our employees go out of network? Do you have, is that something, or how much money's been spent out of network?
So you're saying Winchester Medical is out of network?
That's in-network for us, for Highmark.
PEIA doesn't, but they don't show, or they don't pay for anything, or everything would be out of network other than West Virginia.
Right, but Winchester is in-network if it collects, if it takes the.
As long as they take Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's in-network, and you'll find that the vast majority of hospitals will take Blue Cross Blue Shield regardless of what, what particular Blue Cross Blue Shield it is.
So PEIA, if you went to John Hopkins, do you say that'd be out of network?
It's out, I can tell you it's out of network.
And the other thing, my brother-in-law, my cousin has PEIA. He had to have some shoulder surgery. Of course, we have some great surgeons in Winchester and all this other, he had to go clear to Morgantown. You know, not just the fact that, I can't imagine needing shoulder replacement and having to ride all the way to Morgantown for surgery, and then come back, and then all your, all your post-visits and everything follow on, little aggravation.
The other thing that we're recommending with the emergency room visits for non-emergency, if an employee goes to urgent care, it's 100%, 100% coverage after $75 co-pay, 60% after the $75 co-pay now for non-network. Of course, we're recommending that network stay at 100% after 75 co-pay, and there are urgent cares here that, that will not even charge you the $75 co-pay, it's actually less. And there's nothing to say that an urgent care facility can't charge less. And then if you go out of network, it would be 50%. Emergency room visits for an emergency, actual. Emergency room visits for an emergency, actual emergency is $150 copay. However, it is waived, and it's 100% coverage if the employee's admitted. What we're recommending is because of the high usage of emergency room for non-emergency reasons, we're recommending that the copay, the increase from $200, which is currently waived if admitted, to $500 copay, which would be waived if the employees admitted. So if you go to the emergency room and it's a true, a true emergency, it would be $200. If you're admitted, it's 100% coverage, there's no change. However, if you go to the emergency room and it's for a non-emergency reason, you're going to pay $500 out-of-pocket. Now, I just read an article that the average emergency room visit costs, health insurance companies between $5,000 and $7,000.
So, so if you're admitted, does that mean like an overnight stay?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, if you, hypothetically, if you had a kidney stone and you were, thought you were dying, and went to the emergency room, and they ended up giving you some kind of shot, or whatever they give you for pain, whatever.
Huh?
Whatever, the gravel pit would know.
Yeah.
The, the, so then you wouldn't be admitted, so you would end up having to pay $500 for that?
Well, no.
Even though that's a service that you wouldn't get?
No, you would pay $200.
Currently.
Because you did, no, even under, no, you'd pay, if you went to the emergency room for kidney stone, I don't think anyone would, would argue that that wasn't an emergency.
Oh, no, I get it, but I, I thought your definition was, had to be admitted to an overnight stay.
No, no. If, if you go for an emergency room, to the emergency room for an emergency, let's say I'm having chest pains, and I, you know, I'm sweating profusely and pains are going down my left arm, and I go to the emergency room, and they say, oh, we think you're having a heart attack, they're going to hook me up to an EKG, and they're going to run a battery test, they're going to do blood tests to see what my enzyme levels are, and so on and so forth. When that's all said and done, I'm going to pay $150, because I was in the emergency room for an emergency. Anything after that $150 is covered at 100%. If I go to the emergency room because I have cold, and that's not going to change, that's what's in place now, and that's what...
Right, I understand.
Will stay in place. If I go to the emergency room now because I have a cold and I can't sleep at night, and they say, oh, you, you've got a cold, you should have gone to urgent care, the family care doctor, and whatever diagnostic code they put on it, right now I pay $200 copay, and the health insurance still pays 100%. What we're proposing is instead of a $200 copay, that that non-emergency deductible be changed to $500.
And, and I was, and I totally get it, and I think that's, I think that's the most sensible thing to do, but I was trying to figure out what determines, huh?
The word admitted.
Yeah, the word admitted. Is, is admitted mean you actually get admitted overnight? Or does that mean you go in the back and they do some kind of procedure? Maybe Brian's back there smiling, maybe.
No, I think it means that you have to be admitted overnight.
He's probably smiling.
I mean, you actually have to be institutionalized.
Right.
And, you know, I'm sure there are many out there that think I should be institutionalized, but you would have to be kept, even if they keep you overnight for observation.
Right.
And then, and I, I broke this out into detail because I wanted the council, and you don't work with us on a daily basis, but I just want you to see how rich our benefits are.
All right.
I mean, when you look down, you know, the 100% payments, even if you look at adult physical exam, adult immunization, routine gynecological exams, annual mammogram, diagnostic services and procedures, routine pediatric physical exams, pediatric immunizations, they're all covered at 100% with no deductible. That's a pretty good deal. And when you look at hospital inpatient, hospital outpatient, 100% after your deductible, maternity, including well-baby care is 100% after the deductible, physical, physical therapy, limit of 30 visits per benefit period, 100% after the deductible respiratory therapies the same way, inpatient medical health services, 100% after deductible. We're not recommending that you change, that you change any of those if you stay in network. The only, the only change we're saying is that if you go out of network, instead of paying 60%, you're going to get 50% payment. And if, if you go to page six, it's the same thing. We're not changing anything until you get the prescriptions.
That sounds like you're putting some of the responsibility on the individual to do, to do what they should be doing to help save the cost for everybody.
Right. And we're try, we, as you can see, only a, and, and I think it's a good thing that the majority of our employees are not accessed, have no need to access the system. That means our employees hopefully are staying healthy and doing...
Sounds like over 85%.
The right thing.
Right.
But we have the small percentage of our employees are, who are pretty big users. I don't want to, and I don't want to say this the wrong way, but I don't want to penalize the majority of our employees for services that are being provided to those that truly need it. I mean, I want the services to be there if you need them, but if you don't need them, okay. And that's, that's why I'm trying to do some of the, the, the cost shifting.
I understand some of that, Mr. Davis. I guess the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is maximum out-of-pocket. For a family, take maximum out-of-pocket of $15,000, a lot of money.
That's correct.
A lot. So, I mean, that's, that's the concern that I have. And we've worked so hard over the years to try to, try to, as you said, to get their pay scale where it needs to be, and another reason why we're able to train people that is good and bad is because of our benefit package. How, how much of a, and I'm, you know, you and I haven't talked about this at all, so, and you put a lot of work into this, is there a hybrid approach to where the on-page, page five, that we do those things, but maybe look at the deductibles and maximum out-of-pocket?
Well, what's listed on page five and six are separate from those things that are listed on page four. So they're not all-inclusive, and one doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the other.
But in order to get the rate down to a 2.37% increase, or a 1.92% increase, somewhere between there, you'd have to do all inclusive above, which is four, five, and six, right?
Correct. But if you do... And Penny and I have talked about this because she will tell you that even I...
$15,000 out-of-pocket.
The $5,000 individual and $10,000 family deductible.
If you leave the $5,000...
It goes to 7,500 to 15,000.
If you leave the $5,000, if you change the $500 individual with 750 individual, so it's 500,000, 750, 1,500.
Right.
You leave the $1,500, 3,000 plan in place, you leave the $5,000 individual, the $10,000 family coverage in place, which means that the total out-of-pocket expense is then 7,915.9. If you, if you leave it at 5,000, 10,000, instead, and you adopt all the other changes that are on pages five and six, which is the change in the emergency room, use of emergency room for non-emergency reasons, changing the deductible, the pay, payment for non-network services from 60 to 50, and then make the changes to the prescription drugs that we haven't talked about yet, but that are, that are offered to you. If you make those changes, and then that actually would increase our cost by, as I've run all the, all the numbers, instead of 2.37% for the, for the Blue Cross Blue Shield 2010, it would increase the premium by 9.6%.
How many people currently are on the $500 deductible?
The $500 deductible plan currently has 282 participants.
So that's their vast majority of people.
And the, the...
304, you said, right?
Out of 304, 282 are under the $500 deductible plan. And that's because we pay 100% of the coverage for employee-only, for $30,000 worth of life, employee-only vision, employee-only dental in the $500 deductible plan. I mean, if the council doesn't feel comfortable with any of these changes, and we just leave it where it's at, then, and...
385,000, 700, $4 increase.
Correct. And yet, but the other thing that that does then, is that, that 480 couple thou, or that 400, roughly $400,000 is, is, is our cause. For those employees that have dependent coverage, it's going to increase their, their premium by 17%.
I've already thought about that.
I have too. Penny and I have had many, many, many discussions about it, you know, and we started out with one or two options, and late last week, I had six options. And what we're offering to you is what collectively we think is the, the least of, of all evils, I guess.
Ma'am, can you come back up to the podium, please?
How much money has to be spent to get the to, 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 to cost you that total max out-of-pocket? How many, how, what's the, what's the medical bill have to be? That's what I'm asking.
On the $5,000, $10,000?
So if, if you're taking the one that Doug was talking about...
It would have to be astronomical.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Because the plan's already paying 80%.
Yeah, right.
So you're paying 20% to get the maximum out-of-pocket after you've met your deductible. So you meet your deductible, and then all the eligible expenses if you're in network after that, the plan pays 80%, you're paying 20.
Right. So you, you're basically $15,000 per, or $15,000 per 100,000, right? If you're going to pay 15%.
20%. So that's, but that's 15, $15,000 is only 15%.
Right. Yeah, oh, it's 80%. 80%, not 85.
Right.
Right. So you'd have to, you'd have to pay, right, so out of $100,000, you're still only going to pay 15,000.
It, it's hard to meet your out-of-pocket maximum, maximum out-of-pocket expense.
Right.
I mean, you'd have to have some cash draw.
Right. Did we have anybody that met their maximum out-of-pocket last year?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That's what I'm thinking. If you don't, if you don't even meet your deductible, having our employees don't even meet your pocket number deductible, how many are ever going to meet out-of-pocket increases? They don't even meet the deductible. So if you're increasing out-of-pocket, you're never going to meet that.
And that was, that was my question, Doug was thinking it's a, a big pill for a family, but if you, if we don't have anybody ever meeting that out-of-pocket, we're not even, we're not even there.
And, and even, I mean, I even struggled raising the $500 deductible to 750.
I don't have as much heart for my family as I do if we have employees that have families and their children are sick. It's more than half of what they make out of the out-of-pocket. $16,300 is, could be more than half of what some of them make, by far more than half. Clear to hear. So...
But...
Hard to absorb, and all, this is the first time we've, any of us have heard about the plan. I'd like to have until next week to make a decision.
You can take whatever you, take whatever time you want. I mean, I've delayed it as long as I could because, like I said, we've worked through six different options. So I've, we've had six months to know on it.
There's something else that I thought about that I'll say is, because I was trying to calculate up the savings that we had. We had 3.1% savings one year, we had 3.8% savings another year, and then the following year, and then a couple of years, we had 3% on one portion of it, 10.8% on another increase. Very seldom that we see years that we have a deduction. I've seen some, but every year we have an increase, we have to ask the employees to give up something.
But last year, if you remember, we had a 3% increase, but when we had the decreases, we did not decrease our per-employee allocation. So we were able to absorb those increases last year.
Easier.
Because, and we didn't have to adjust budget.
Right. So there's, yeah, there's a little bit of thought process and...
Right.
A little bit more information that I may need to make it educated.
My, I guess my thought process had been taking into consideration family coverage. Let's say I have family coverage, and I'll use, you know, I'll use the $5,000 deductible. The total cost for, the total monthly cost of the $5,000 deductible 2020, or HRA plan is $1,404, which comes out roughly to 14, $17,000 a year. That's with the increase. And the county currently pays a little bit more than $8,100. Let's say we increase that to $8,300 next year. So I'm going to have to pay, now it's on a pre-tax basis, I'm going to have to pay the difference between $17,000 and $8,000 for full family coverage that my family may or may not use. So I'm trying to, to balance, do we, you know, we've talked about, how do we treat everybody the same? You know, I want to say, when it comes to medical, with a situation like that, it's either pay me now or pay me later. If, if my, if my monthly cost is less, but my deductible, my total maximum out-of-pocket is higher, hopefully I would take some of that money and put it away for the possible out-of-pocket expenses. But if we keep the, if we keep things where they're at now, an employee that has full family coverage, even under the $5,000 deductible, the monthly cost of that plan goes from $1,195.21 to $1,404.55.
So, so, so let me ask you a question. If you were, and this is hypothetical because I don't even know if you can do it, but if you were to, to raise this and say that, say that any, and, and, and I'm going on the presumption that we've not had anybody that maxed out their out-of-pocket, so it really didn't happen this year, if nobody maxed out of, out-of-pocket at $5,000 and $10,000, if you said that you created and went to the new plan and changed the new plan, but the county would absorb cost of anybody that... absorb costs of anybody that went over the maximum 5,000, or they would absorb the cost for individual that would have to pay the additional, that an individual would have to pay over the 5,000. So if you maxed out on the plan that you're talking about, the county would pay the 8150, or they would pay 3150, the, the 3,150 that went above the 5,000, which is the current plan, or they would pay 6,300 for a whole family that went above the 10,000, which is the current plan, that the county would pay that. So, so basically, you're saying that you would keep those numbers the same, and the county would pay those extra costs if it ever happened, and, and if we look at our history, it hasn't last year, so maybe it won't. But if it did, you're really, truly taking care of anybody that has a catastrophic family problem.
Some more self-awareness.
But then I'm, if I'm a, if I'm a young, single, unmarried employee, I'm going to say, well, why are you giving that old guy that has fa, a family?
And if you step on...
Better, better benefits than me.
Not really, because you step on a rusty nail, and you turn to gangrene, you have to have your leg amputated, we're still going to cover the same thing on you.
I don't agree with that, but, I don't agree with that.
We definitely have some talking points.
I, I don't know, I'm just hypothetically, though, I mean, I, it sounds like a way, and I agree, that's a big pill. I mean, when you jump from 10, even though, I mean, one of the reasons you pay for insurance is the word "insurance." So you're insuring, you're insuring that you have this maximum amount that you're going to have to pay. And for a long time, when I had insurance, that's all I had was catastrophic insurance. I didn't have, I didn't have any insurance at all. I just had something that was going to cover me if I had...
A true major medical?
Yeah, yeah, a major issue.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure that I'm looking at this correctly. If you paid for the employee 636, and the, the child and employee is 1273, but you subtract the 636, so they're only actually paying 636 a month that's coming out of their pay.
Well, and, and you'll see later on in the proposal, though I never got to. Right now, we budget 1,000, $8,148 per employee per year. And I was recommending that we budget $8,300 per employee per year. So anything over that $8,300, and that $8,300 would pay 100% of the employee-only coverage for the 750 plan, so anything above that would be taken off on a pre-tax basis. But yes, you're correct.
I just wanted, because sometimes you look at this and say, well, gee, the guy's got to pay out, or a person has to pay out their salary, $7, you gotta really get this employee out.
Right. So you want me to reschedule for next week? Come back?
Please.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the other thing that we, that we, that, I forgot, I skipped over, for a lot of, for a lot of years, or forever, since we've had Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it's never made sense to me, there's a plan year and a contract year. The plan year runs from January 1st to December 31st, and the contract year runs from July 1st to June 30th. The city of Martinsburg took steps last year to, to align the two, and that would be one of the things also that we would recommend as part of this proposal. It does go into some cost savings, because it resets some of the deductibles.
Can't imagine why they have...
It's been like that for, and, and the employees are confused, because...
Well, I've had that conversation with Penny before.
If I change from one plan to the next, and my deductibles start in January, but I change my plans in July, then it messes, it messes all the deductibles.
Is that an insurance thing, so they can see how you're trending going forward, that they also...
No, Highmark actually prefers that they be aligned with each other, but...
It could be aligned on a fiscal...
It would be on a fiscal year basis. Every, the plan year and the contract year would run from July 1st to June 30th, always.
But just how that do, do you have to meet two different deductibles?
No, the deduct, the employees deductible would actually start, instead of January 1st deductible, would start July 1st.
So, but you have a, either a missing six months deductible time...
It, it would affect those employees that have already paid some towards their deductible this year.
Right. They're a reset.
It's almost like rebooting your computer.
So now, so now that person, it would be 1630 and 1630.
Correct. We have 76 employees that would be in that position. 76 participants that have paid something towards their deductible. That would be effective.
But not only that, your deductible would reset, but so could your maximum out-of-pocket reset?
It would.
How many, I would, I would meet what, what I was talking about, about doing to keep the, the maximum out-of-pocket deficit. I'd be curious to see how many, how many employees would have to be on that program in order to get that cost low enough to compensate, or how much could be saved if, if you had, you know, 20% of your employees on that program, by the cost of that program, as opposed to that money that we allocate to be able to fund that extra cost of the 6,000 family or whatever.
Is that even possible?
I, I don't know.
You know, because right now, we're making up the difference in the deductible for an in-house condition. Wow. This is a whole nother...
Yeah, and I'm not sure about stroking a check, using public funds to stroke a check to pay directly for employees' medical expenses like that.
I don't even know if that's a doable thing. I'm just asking, it sounds to me like you may be able to get a higher percentage of employees to buy that program, if you could, if you could offset that, and then that program is a less expensive program than what we're allocating, so then we would have some extra funds there from what we allocate to be able to put towards that.
But then there comes in the question, who's going to administer it? Who's going to make the decisions on how the payments are dispersed? I mean, I, I mean, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
How many?
Three.
I know, but that's what I say, this would give, this would give an incentive to, to go with that, because that is a lower cost. And we, we allocate, what is it, 83, you said?
Eight, well, I was recommending 8300.
Right.
Okay.
We'll reschedule for next week for further discussion.
Yeah, please. Is Bill Kearns out there?
Yeah.
All right, Bill, it's always good to have you to lead this discussion on the update on COVID-19. Good afternoon, sir. It is.
So some things have changed since last week, when I was here in front of you. Mainly those things that have changed are, we have more people that are positive identified in the, in the county, but Berkeley County's growth is not larger than Morgan County's, as far as in proximity of their population. They've actually had more, more of a growth of recent, in the past week or so than what we have. We have, went up, we're now at 171 positive identified cases in our county, as of yesterday's numbers, and of those 171, 113 of them have recovered. So what that means is there's 58 of them, of those positive cases that have been identified are still on current surveillance, so they're getting reported in each day, we're tracking them. They have not fully recovered from the virus to be released from our, our surveillance. So, last week, we had about 45 that were still being tracked, so this week's is 58. Our numbers are still increasing, but not at a huge rate.
Can I, can I interrupt real quick and ask you a question before I forget about it? What's, have we increased the percentage of testing that we're doing?
Yeah, yes.
If our numbers are increasing, one would, one would think that the testing is increasing as well, to see that.
I'm seeing more places, they're actively testing. We still are not doing the testing at the health department, because our other testing sites within the county that are doing it are not being overtasked. They're, they're actually sometimes waiting for people to come through, but you still have to have symptoms to be able to be qualified to be able to go test it. So, like, all of us could not go in and just say, we just want to be tested, just because we want to be tested. You have to, you have to qualify, be able to get those, you have to have symptoms that have been identified, and, and part of the, you know, the respiratory issues, fever, unexplained fever, those type issues to qualify you to be able to go to those testing sites.
Right. And I, and I understand that process, I'm just trying to get my head around the, the true part of it. If they're, if we're increasing testing by 25% of patients who think they're, they have symptoms, then one would assume that your numbers are probably going to jump 25% because a proportion, and even, if an even proportion of that was still showing positive.
Right. One of the things that, reasons that, like Nawa County, were considered, and I'll talk about this more in a minute, about being a hotspot area. They had a, a large increase amount of people that were, that were identified as being positive for COVID-19, but a lot of those were identified in nursing homes, at outbreaks in nursing homes. We have just completed our, our nursing home sweep of all of them being tested, and came back with no positive identified cases in nursing homes in Berkeley County.
Right.
That is incredible.
That's great.
As of yesterday, the governor now has expanded it to all assisted living care facilities now must be tested. We're hoping for the same results. We still remain wondering how those get done, and who's going to be contracted to go and do those testing, whether it's air guard, or are they going privately contract, as what nursing homes did. Initially, talking about daycares, daycares were initially identified as needing to be tested, then they said, well, they didn't have to be tested. Now, as of yesterday, they have been identified again that that, all daycare workers will have to be tested, and, and the reason for that is because there's been some identified cases that were asymptomatic, but they were positive, and within the daycare settings, and so that's making it necessary that the governor declared yesterday that all daycare centers must now be tested. So we are working with them, not sure exactly how many we have within the county, because there's full daycares, there's family daycares, I'm missing any...
Well, there's a lot of...
250, 270, I think.
A lot of them.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
Years, yes.
So, we're working with them. The, a lot of controversy I know around hotspots. What is a hotspot? Why are we a hotspot? Who declared us a hotspot? It's still, a lot has, has to do at the state level, although the governor said that the, the state health officer, Dr. Schlempp, working with our county health officer, and the county health officer can request that the counties remain a hotspot. That, that name is getting a little vague, as far as what does that really mean now? But being a hotspot county provides a lot of resources to us. The air guard, it provides a lot of resources for us. The big one is having the health officer be able to work with you all to be able to, we need to promulgate additional regulations, and it also takes, where the state right now is at 25 or less people in a gathering, that downsizes it to five or more, and that's mainly in the outside areas. It is in the outside areas. Because inside any facility, whether it's essential or business, as originally declared, or ones that are opening back up now, that are small businesses, according to the governor, those are already covered under the emergency rule, which is 64 CSR 114. That is the one that's still in place, and that is the one that's important, that I feel that a large amount of people are not exactly aware of.
That is square footage?
That is. Yes, ma'am. So if Berkeley County decides, either health officer talks to the state health officer and says, we don't want to be, have that declaration of being a hotspot, our numbers aren't exceeding a certain amount every week, we can be removed, that, that title can be removed, as Berkeley County being a hotspot area, but what it does not, it does not negate the fact that that emergency rule is in place that limits the amount of people that can be inside. So it's two people per 1,000 square foot, unless you are 80% or more grocery sales, and then it's three people per 1,000 square foot. There is a minimum for the smaller places, there's a minimum of five people, so even if you're only, again, we've talked before, even if you're only 1,000 square foot, you can still have five people, including employees in there. That is caught, covered under CSR, 64 CSR 114. It talks about the square footage. In, in places that are open, that, that talks about them implementing a written plan to limit the staff, contractors, and vendors within that facility. So that covers pretty much every entity, and some places consider themselves small businesses, but by the governor, they're not. So we look each and every day for what the governor is releasing, and I know there's questions about from the county, when's the county going to be able to be released, and that's covered under weeks three to six governmental offices. And we don't know what's covered in week three, the whole week, because that starts next Monday. Every Monday is that week, according to the governor. So next Monday, the only thing that I know is being released, that really doesn't apply to us, is drive-in, drive-in theaters, as well as other one, wellness centers.
So couldn't, couldn't one assume that nothing other than that is going to be, since the governor said, we will, he will notify a week ahead of what will be happening the next week?
That was exactly what I was getting ready to, to say. They, they, they have placed in their slide that we received, under the West Virginia Strong, it does say, will be announced at least one week prior to reopening, and then covers, that covers offices, governmental buildings, specialty retail stores, parks, facilities at parks, gyms, fitness centers, recreational centers, dining restaurants, hotels, casinos, spas, massage parlors, and remaining small businesses. All of those are listed between three and six, and we have no idea when the governor is going to release those.
So does the emergency rule is, so, so I'm assuming what you're saying is the emergency rule is still in effect through the whole state at this point?
Even when these get released, if they released restaurants, excuse me, if they released restaurants to be able to open up next week, this rule still stands in force.
Yeah.
That they, the minimal amount, or maximum amount of people they can allow in their facility. I believe the, the rule will be either relaxed or, or suspended, but not sure exactly when that'll be. What I did receive today, because one of my colleagues in Harrison County sent me a, and I emailed this to you, Mr. neighborhood, in regards to courts, sent to you in Norwood and prosecuting attorney, as far as when they're going to be able to open up, and the, in particularly, in response to, it's listed for in-person hearings, or proceedings may commence, and this was signed, by the way, by Chief Justice Armstead, that in-person hearings and proceedings may commence on or after May 18th, grand jury proceedings may commence on or after June 15th, and jury trials may commence on or after June 29th. And that was signed as of yesterday and entered. So that was information I just received this morning, so I figured that'd be good information to pass on.
Okay, so, so as we enter, on this hotspot, you talked about having access to the national guard, and have, so be able to look for stuff like that. Do you and Dr. Reedy, you talk on, apparently on a daily basis, I'm sure, have plans on the future, short-term future about the desolation of the hotspot?
I, I asked Dr. Reedy today if he was looking at removing that declaration from the county. Um, he has not, um, not decided on that yet. Um, he's more so looking at, at what's going on within the county versus looking at that designation. Um, again, that only kind of refers to everything else, kind of centers around that, how many people you can have in a gathering outside, um, the five people versus the 25 the governor will allow. Um, and that is, in a, in a, when you look at five people or 25 people, that's in a close setting. So, um, if you're at a, if you're at an event, something outside or you're in the park, um, it's just that many people in a close setting, that doesn't mean the whole park can only have five people in it.
Right. It's a congregation of a small group.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And most of your outdoor restaurant, or restaurants that have outdoor seating would never be able to be 25 people due to the social distancing that needed probably.
That's correct. With the, um, the other requirements that are in there, where outside seating at restaurants, it makes it very difficult. And we are doing lot, plan reviews because everyone's, everyone wants to put tables outside. Um, so if they're not initially been permitted for that, we have to review those. But you're right, whether it's outside or inside, if you look at the CSR ruling, I can't see many restaurants that can stand and be in operation with the limitations of the amount of people that they can have in their facility.
So let me ask you, I, I gotta use an example. So Chili's has some outdoor seating on the west side of their place, right? And let's say if you used every other table, which I think there's only probably, well, probably isn't quite a few because there's three rows, but small tables. But if, if they were to, uh, keep a table smaller than four, which we allow a server to be fit on, and was able to keep, um, six foot apart on from table to table, is that permissible?
Yes.
Okay.
They couldn't have a table with, they couldn't have a table with.
Five plus the weight.
Twenty people at it.
Right.
That's correct.
Because it, it would break the 25 rule.
Yes, sir.
But if they had tables set out, separated, yeah, and that would be my interpretation for what that's worth, because that's about what it is right now, everybody's trying to figure out.
And, and daily, I'm, daily, I'm getting calls, um, for, um, churches. Can churches be open? And, uh, my answer is absolutely. The 25 or five ruling, whichever one you look at, does not refer to churches. But 64 CSR 114 does. So that's where you need to look at what the size of the church is, and then how many people you can allow in that church at any given time.
Or in the classroom probably, right?
Yes. So you look at the churches, you have so many people in a fellowship hall, so many people in a sanctuary, if your church has those, uh, the fellowship hall. Um, so how many people can you allow in there? Plus the other requirements of having the other, every other pew separated, um, with nobody in, you only have your, part of your immediate family sitting in, in the pew beside you, and then having the social distance between anybody else that's going to sit in that pew, um, and then everybody wear a mask, recommending everyone to wear a mask or, or face coverings. So there's a lot of recommendations in there to be able to operate, but still you can't, can't go around 64 CSR 114. I'm assuming that this will probably be suspended before the grand juries come into play. Because it gets to the point, does Chief Justice overrule this, this, the emergency rule, or which one comes first?
What a mess.
Well, which one would? June, I believe it was June 15th I mentioned. Um, grand jury proceedings commence on or after June 15th. So we are, I, I, I feel as a county, we are moving forward, um, but we're moving only forward as far enough as this, this, this emergency rule will allow us to move. So with our staff at the health department, we are looking at, um, bringing back more staff as of the 18th of, of May. But we cannot exceed our 14, which is a 7,000 square foot facility. We can't exceed that amount of people in the building, including, um, our, our patients or our clients that will come in. So we're looking at that.
The rule follows us.
Yes, sir. I would have to look at that.
That, that is the rule that's, that's the decision in rule. Says all business. We can run. Show to the extent possible. Work from home or daycare?
Um, and, and that's actually, I guess, 1143, yeah, that's actually here, and it does list that. Um, also in, in that part, talks about implementing a written plan, having social distancing practices, a lot of these to the extent possible. But then when it goes down to 3.3A, that's where it lists that no more than two individuals, members of the public may enter a business per 1,000 square foot. That, that, that paragraph there does not have much, much gray in it.
No, that, that one does. People who can come in this building.
Mm-hmm.
Limited, uh, the square footage. Some of the square footage.
And, and I, and I think that, for this building, you're doing a great job of, of booths coming in, where you're going to and how many people are coming in. I think you're doing an incredible job of that, but I know this, this is nothing that can last much longer. And, uh, so my, um, my request that I've made, um, as well as many have, is do we, is to request, is this going to be suspended or, or dispersed with soon? So that we can continue to go in the direction that the governor has given us the abilities to. So when the governor says, you know, governmental offices can reopen, can you reopen? Or do you, are you, do you have to adhere to this rule?
Right, because we never closed our government building, but we adhere to all the rules.
Yes.
And, and because we, you know, government and order is essential business.
Yes. Yes.
So.
That was an audio glitch.
So, 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 uh, so if, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correct, and, and I'm just doing a comparison like Doug did with a, uh, a restaurant, if I'm understanding this correct, you stay inside the building of a, let's say, a, uh, a home store, they're allowed X amount of people per square foot. And if you have to wait in line in order to get in there, as long as that line doesn't congregate more than 25 people in less than six feet.
Five people, hotspot.
Uh?
Five people for a hotspot.
But, but throughout, well, I, what, what, where's the 25?
That's for non-hotspot counties.
But then I go one step further.
So, so, so then, so then if that, that would be the difference between the hotspot and non-spot, hotspot, is that they, they could get close enough in line to where they're not six feet apart, but they still could only be 25 of them at that point?
Correct.
What happens if you got six people in line and they're still six feet apart? Do that mean they're six foot criteria, which one of the rules?
I.
I've had that conversation.
We have, and, uh, I, I think as long as you're abiding with that six-foot rule, you're not have, they're not close, it's not a group. My way of looking at it is, you know.
It's not a group.
It's not a group.
Right.
So you're not together, you're not within touching distance of each other, you're at least six feet apart. And I think that's where our businesses are doing a great job of marking it off, but you can only mark it off unless you're there with a whip, making people stay in line, they're, they're going to be right up on each other.
Because it's, I'm, I'm, I'm really surprised that there's an enormous amount of people that are real, um, real conscious of those things. I mean, as I go around, uh, different places, I, I think, I think the overwhelming majority of people are real conscious of those things and.
I would agree with you.
Their, their social distancing, that type of thing.
They're not wearing face masks, coverings that were recommended.
I heard you on the radio the other day. I think there's arguments both ways.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, the face mask can, not, not that I wouldn't wear one in certain circumstances, but I think if you wear one all the time, maybe, uh, maybe dangerous to your health as well.
It'd be, especially if you don't wash them.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, just breathing the carbon dioxide and, you know, and, and limiting anything from getting into your system for your immunity as well.
One of the things we haven't really pushed, um, or checked on as much, and we will be, is all food service workers have to wear them.
Right.
That will, uh, that will be an issue, um, I'm sure, because they're working, it's hot.
They're trying to talk.
In trying to, yes, yes. But that's a requirement under guidance from the governor.
I can see where there's going to be some crazy mask made.
Yes, there already are.
One of the things you said the other day on the radio was, was something that was really a good information, and I just didn't think about it, when you said, make sure you put those masks in the dryer.
Yes.
Because the heat, and I was like, duh, obviously.
We're, we're, we're all wearing our, our cloth mask and they're great. And they, I mean, depending on what, how they're made, they can be a little restricted from wearing, but when you take that and you wash that and putting it in a dryer, that, that sustained heat is what kills the virus.
Yeah.
Maybe on there, you didn't wash it very well and wash these, you can't just hang it up, stick it in your dryer.
Absolutely. Good idea.
The, uh, one of the, one of the misconceptions though, that a lot of people have, is that they feel that the limitation on the amount of people that you can have in a facility, a business, is set by the health officer. And that is so wrong. That, that guidance was not set by any of the county health officers. That was set by our governor and his people that guide him in Charleston.
They just tasked you to enforce it.
They tasked us with enforcement. Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Bill?
Another thing I have is a comment, there was a number of weddings that were scheduled at the Roundhouse, we made it too, because all of that's gone out the weather. And I said, I can't imagine trying to foresee trying to reschedule something of that nature. We probably have already printed up the, the announcements and all kinds of other things like that.
As a minister, I've had quite a few of those scheduled to perform as well, and we're having to reschedule, and some are having a hard time, depending on your venue, they may not even be able to get them in this year.
Right, I mean, that's one of the, because we had six scheduled.
Here's another business, somebody else can start, you know, doing, uh, my porch, my porch is a good, like, second.
Or virtual weddings.
Virtual, of course.
Zooming in for a wedding.
Do a Zoom wedding?
Yeah.
There you go. Limit the amount of people could object.
I will say that the health department reception area is very busy. I've tried to call probably seven times yesterday, and, uh, they were, either on the line or busy with other tasks, so, but they didn't call me back, so it's, it's, uh, you know, your office is busy and trying to answer everybody's concerns and frustrations and all of that stuff.
And they send all those to me, so I, I can testify that they are a lot of complaints.
I can see the gray color.
I, I was talking to Dr. Reedy the other day, and he said that you're, you're soon going to have your antivirus testing, have you got that yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, because I talked to him on, I think it was Monday.
What about the, what about the new medication for the virus? I hear that the, the newest medication's going quite well.
I believe that's still in trials.
It's being used on people that, right?
It was really.
Right.
I, I do know Dr. Reedy is working with scheduling a, a follow-up LEPC meeting for next week, to kind of give everyone in that committee part of his guidance that he's looking at, and where we were from the last time he had that meeting to where we are now. I believe that's going to be in schedule for either Monday or Wednesday afternoon the, next week, but I haven't got that confirmed down yet. I know he, he asked us morning to have that scheduled, so.
One of the things I want to bring the attention that you, you're always, you're pulled everywhere which direction, so you gotta leave right after you get done talking to us. One of the things that Brian's brought up, I think at least I know it was last week, Costello and possibly it's the following, the week before that, was the overdose calls in the county. Pretty drastic, he said. So they, they came back, uh, and, and we were fearful of that. Uh, Tim Zia was fearful of that as well, of, you know, clients in his data report center, that he's going to lose more by overdose than anything.
I can tell you with this pandemic, depression is real. As much as we're confined, confined to being at home, they are as well, um, or wherever they live, but the depression part is very real, and that's what they turn to. So I can certainly understand that the overdose rates have gone up. I know for our harm reduction clinic, we still, we are still having an active harm reduction clinic, they just had to change things around, they've done a lot, they've actually changed, uh, they're doing a lot of home deliveries, um, as much as possible, as much as they would give us their addresses.
Right, right.
But our clients are still seeking, um, help from us, and we're giving it. But I can definitely understand the overdose rates.
Yeah, and that's always a good, and, and, and somebody told me the other day, um, which makes great sense, um, and, and I don't mean this in a bad way either, but, um, this state, sad to say, is number one in the nation for, for drug overdoses and death, or death by, done, created by overdose. And, um, business went on as usual. You know, we have more people dying from overdoses in this nation than car accidents anymore.
Yes, sir.
So. But we're thinking about all kinds of things that are ahead.
Your, your depression not only affects, you know, the drug overdose, but you're domestic violence. I was talking to somebody this morning that is now taking care of a case because the, the family is all split up.
Absolutely.
And all the things that are happening. So our families are really taken a hit all the way around.
Doug beat on me last night.
Maybe it was justified, but I tell you, as, as the temperatures get warmer, people want to get out.
Yeah.
It's an anxiety level that's extreme right now.
Right. Yeah. All right, as always, thank you and thank you for a bankless job.
Yes, sir.
Brian? It's, hey, hey, Bill, uh, Eddie's not out there, is he? Okay.
Well, uh, I had not planned to be here today. Chief Weinberger was going to brief you, and then he had to step out to a, another meeting. I had a construction project I was working on, but I'm.
Looks like you kind of got a little.
I did, I'm a fair weather contractor, so a little bit, a little bit too cool for me this morning. A little bit too cool.
That's why that hammer got you.
That's what it was, but, you know, tearing decks apart and rebuilding them, but, uh, anyway, you know, some of the positive things going on, we, we concur with what he just said, we're seeing the overdoses, suicides, domestic violences start to creep up a little bit, and we know why that's happening. So, uh, kind of shifts our game from more of a medical treatment care to a palliative care of what recommendations we can make to these people to get them the help that they need and kind of reduce some of that stress. You know, it's been another good week, with no quarantines, no loss of people, uh, we're well over the 150 mark of transported COVID possible patients. We are getting information out of the VA now. Uh, found out this morning that they've had all four of their ER doctors, that's positive.
Is that right?
For COVID. So they're working on getting contract physicians and other, bring other physicians from other VAs. But, uh, that was a big, you know, hey, we probably need to look at this on a, on a larger scale, which is what I said about four weeks ago, but hey, now we're there, that's the good thing. Positive stuff, uh.
Back up, that's a good statement there. The, the, the sudden surge of the VA coming forth with their positive cases may be the reason why our case load went up.
I can tell you, they're testing a lot. I, I get reports now every. I can tell you they're testing a lot. Um, I, I get reports now every day on pending tests, how many positive employees, positive veterans, and then they have a combined veteran employee. Uh, right now they're, I think it was 46 or 50 positives, but nine of those were retested. So, they have, uh, 41 positives out of there. So, it's.
Right there, 41 positive, 173 that's on the website today from VAHR. That's a big number.
Correct. And of course, they have a nursing home there that they just did testing in that nursing home. So, I'm sure some of those numbers came out of there. Their initial stuff came from their sixth floor, which is their mental hygiene floor. Uh, they had an employee test positive and they just shut that down, had us divert anything going there and went in and did testing in the VA center. So, uh, I can send you the numbers that I have, um, as far as what they've got. But, uh, they are actively doing testing. I think the last time I looked at 69 tests pending. So, uh, in one day they got 170-some tests back negative. So, that was a good, a big chunk of that, but.
Again, I don't know whether they have always reported to the state on a routine basis or they stopped or didn't report and then now they're all of a sudden reporting where our cases of 173 cases.
Mr. President, I saw on the, on the news that there was a big incident and a couple of VAs, all kinds of thunder came down. So, I think that that's probably what's.
Yeah, I think there's more behind the scenes going on there than what we're talking about.
Yes.
But it may have been, and Brian did say something a few weeks ago, uh, about concern. Maybe that, that might not have helped the, uh, the, uh, flow of conversation to happen too quickly.
Well, I think, I think it was on a multi-level. We had a Washington DC reporter that was very active. He was being fed some information that allowed, you know, congressional leaders to begin to question the secretary of the VA. And they gave them a very blunt 14 question. We want answers to these 14 bullet points. And, uh, the, the veil started to open a little bit. Of course, we just all of a sudden, we weren't getting any information. That's why I asked you guys if you have any point of contact. We'd like to get that information. And all of a sudden, the doors opened back up again. I was getting the information back again. And it's, uh, you know, it is the fact that I am a veteran, I do get treated there from time to time. It was very important for me to know what potentially out there, but it was important for our folks to, that take our veterans there and for treatment. So, um, yeah, I will get you that information once we get out of here. But like I said, when this all first kicked off, um, Chief Weinberger came to me and said, hey, I, I wanna be your guy with this COVID. I wanna be the one that people come talk to and I wanna take, I wanna be the guy. And it was, it was funny to me to see how that escalated because originally it was just for the organization. And he kinda took on more roles at the county level. And I thought it, for me, it was important that he'd be recognized for that. And of course, I put some things in and made it top secret, as you can see there, and so nobody would open it. But I have wanted him to be here today to give it to him, but I feel you guys need to know about it. So, I'm gonna accept it on his behalf, give it to him later, but I wanted to read it to you. This is from the office of the governor of the state of West Virginia. And it says, uh, "Whereas Chad Weinberger provided outstanding leadership and guidance for all professional volunteer public safety entities during all phases of the COVID-19 crisis in Berkeley County. And whereas Chad Weinberger was instrumental in providing purpose, guidance, direction to the county officials as needed and when called upon. And whereas Chad Weinberger was consistently sought out and valued for his candor and straightforward response to questions and concerns presented to him throughout this pandemic. And whereas Chad Weinberger is a great credit to himself, his family, the Berkeley County Mercy Amis Authority in the great state of West Virginia. And whereas Chad Weinberger is a caring and giving person, his dedication and commitment to his family, friends, community, and career has been an outstanding commitment to us all. Therefore, I, Jim Justice, Governor of the state of West Virginia, do hereby proclaim the honorable Chad Weinberger to be a distinguished mountaineer." And it's, so, I think that's. So, I, I will accept that on his behalf. We'll make sure that he gets it. And, uh, any questions for me?
Brian, I, I think with, with, uh, the governor recognizing Chad, our chief, um, and, and with some of your, your staff going to, to worldwide competitions and coming back as a leading team, um, says a lot for, for the organization. Um, and I, I say this all the time to people, I don't know if I said enough in public, but I, I do touch on it, that you as a director, your staff, um, your office staff, your, your staff out in the field, your field staff, um, your captains in the board do a wonderful job.
Oh, I agree.
So, I think it's, it's very, I'm very proud to be part of that.
I'm glad to have you, sir.
I, I have to agree. I think that you guys do a great service for the community. Um, it, when, when I look at how all this is going and, and I look at, you know, the, the attention that COVID-19 is getting and, and I see what the, what the EMTs are doing and, and, and transporting and everything, it's almost like it's business as normal, that they're out there doing what they always do, just getting it done and, and taking people to the hospital, responding to accidents, doing whatever they have to do. And, uh, it's, it's amazing to watch. And, and not just, just the EMTs. I mean, there's the police officers and, you know, our nurses. I mean, everybody that's responding. It seems.
They're more self-communicating.
Not, 911. Uh, I mean, everybody's, everybody's out there doing like it's business as normal and, and it is a, it is a heightened problem. But you guys live it every day, whether it's this problem or another.
We do. And, and I think this just goes to show that interconnectivity from dispatch to EMS to law enforcement on scene, depending on what the situation may be. I think this kinda shows everybody how, for as much as our things are different, how interwoven they are to success. So, you know, you can be a great dispatcher and a great EMT and a great law enforcement officer, but you have to bring it all together to be an astronomical system. And, uh, I, I think we have that here. You know, we are, we're like brothers and sisters. We get pissed off about something, the other one does. But other than that, you can't do it without each other and that's the way it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Just to pick things from the council's consideration.
Um, the provisions of the order for the emergency scheduling of employees expires tomorrow. Um, unless this council takes further action, all employees will be expected to report, um, for duty except for those employees that are currently on voluntary layoff on Monday. Is that the direction this council?
I guess, I guess it's gonna have to be, from what I understand, not unless somebody's truth would be different. I guess it's gonna have to be extended from what we're doing this week to next week as well.
Okay.
From what I'm hearing from Bill Kearns, if we all have a choice.
Has it been changed at all?
So, you wanna do it for, we'll have to do it.
No.
So, you do wanna do it for an additional?
Two weeks?
No, no, half a week next week, half and half, just like we did this week.
So, 20 hours for regular employees?
Yeah.
And 17 and a half for the assessor?
Right.
Okay. The direction that the council wants to go, because we'll have to get that out today.
Right. Which will take us through 18.
And that means your county employees, the non-assessor employees, or the air employees? Well, I've had 100 and, no, yeah, 120. No, because we only extend it by 16 hours. So, 116 hours of additional sick time added to the books. Now, one of the things that we are looking into, we think under care, um, we may be able to calculate the dollar value of that additional time and try to get reimbursed. Um, one of the things we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Well, the other thing too, I talked to Mr. Davis about this, this, this public safety side, this is getting added to their, their time, allowable time of leave.
Getting at everybody's.
Right, right. So, so, yeah, it could be in the form that we're, continue to work every day.
Right. The essential and non-essential employees both are getting this additional time.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna find that it's gonna affect our, our budget next year.
Well, doesn't, doesn't that, doesn't that time, doesn't that time affect the retirement when, when you're paying insurance down the road?
Well, it depends on whether you're a tier one or tier two employee. So, it could either affect your credited service.
Right.
Giving you more credited service if you're a tier two. If you're a tier one employee, you have the choice of using that for sick time or credited service. Yes. Well, we'll get that ordered together. The, the other matter.
You need a motion to do that.
Yes, sir.
And give me the authority to sign that order. So, somebody wanna make that 20 hours for, then additional 20 hours for, 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 for non-public, or I'm sorry, for everyone and 17 and a half hours for the assessor office.
Some of.
Motion to debate, second, second, any discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye. So, you wanna oppose? Motion carries.
Um, the other, the other matter is just some information. Um, I did receive an email from Tim Zia, your community corrections director this morning, uh, at around 10:30 that says, "Various HIDA treatment initiatives, including the Berkeley Day Report Center, have reported an increase in overdoses and overdose deaths as a result of the COVID-19 restrictions that have been established. It has been determined that face-to-face treatment is vital to the populations that we serve. Laura Pepper is creating a task force, who's our regional representative, Phil Bruce Place, uh, is creating a task force to begin to strategize ways of executing these services throughout the various initiatives while adhering to guidelines. It has invited me, meaning Tim Zia, to be a member. Their first meeting will take place this Monday." So, um, you had had that discussion with, with, uh, with both Brian and, uh, Bill Kearns about the increases in, um, addictions and overdoses and overdose deaths. This is just, it just bears that out. So, uh, Tim will participate in that panel and, uh, maybe next week I'll have him come in and update the council as part of this, this discussion.
Is Laura the young lady we met that, um, uh, Bruce had brought around?
Yeah. She's a PhD. She's really, really sharp. Different personality, but really sharp.
Mr. Davis, the timeline of all the stuff that you, for particular grant, took into the, qualified for the money, was there something like a eight-week time period to spend money?
Was it? No. There's a lot of money out there.
Huh?
Lot of money out there.
Yeah, because I had heard that there was a timeline on some of that.
We have, I met with Brian Costello yesterday, um, that 42,000, that we received that 42,000 and change Department of Justice grant. Um, and it's to buy two of the Clorox, I call them Clorox machines, two of the Clorox disinfecting machines, some PPEs and some other things. Um, he's going to serve as the, Rachel is administering the grant. Um, so Rachel and I and Penny and Brian met briefly yesterday. He's gonna be the source, the point of contact as far as ordering all the supplies and working with Rachel to get reimbursed.
I gotta make a statement real quick. You know, my mind's, we're still working while you're running, talking.
I got one too, but go ahead.
I was about to say run your mouth.
So, in other words, you weren't listening to what I had to say?
I was listening to what you said.
He was thinking.
And you and I briefly talked about the phone yesterday, that, that, you know, the sheriff wanted to, still pretty persistent of trying to give hero pay to his guy, or to his staff. But in reality, the 120 hours that you've gotten is by far more money than what he's talking about, $1,000. And then we talked about how we're gonna allocate that money because we're talking about that's gonna affect people's budget next year. I look at it that we're gonna have to have another line item in our budget on the payroll side as COVID money. Because this is time, allowed time off. So, vacation time, right? Am I right?
No, it's sick time. We added it to their sick leave accumulations.
Okay.
So, that will never go away.
Right. So, so it's sick time will go away, but it doesn't mean that they're not gonna pay their.
So, you use it at some point.
They could use it next year, they could use it year after, year after, which is gonna affect the overtime budget and some people's budget.
Right.
You know, 120 hours for, for 60 deputies, that, that's a, that's a huge amount of time.
And the other thing that we have, well, even if you take, take, uh, take in the average entry level salary of $42,000 and calculate it, 42,000 divided by 260, will give you how much per day.
That's 7,200 hours. That's three positions, you know? So, um, it's a lot of money. I mean, you, we already said it's up to 800 now, not already.
But don't we have to infuse this budget this year? Then it comes out as an unencumbered amount and comes back to the county. But we still have to have that to support that.
Well, it's gonna have to be earmarked as COVID money because if not, they're gonna, they're gonna use it as overtime and they could spend it next year and then won't have no money to fill the budget the year after. It's gonna have to be, that's gonna have to be tracked in a different way.
Well, it's listed as sick time. It's listed, if you look at CMI, it's listed as sick time in COVID.
I know, but 7,200 hours of sick time added to one budget, it's gonna say, well, I got three positions that's gonna be vacant.
Right.
It's like I have three empty positions.
Well, and as we talked yesterday, on June 30th of every year, for example, this June 30th, we have to, we have to calculate the total vacation and sick leave accumulated that's on the books.
Right.
That will show up on our financial statements.
But if we was able to get the reimbursement from the CARES Act, that's gonna have to be put in a separate line item, separate account and draw it upon.
We can put it in the COVID-19 account.
Right. I mean, we're, we're not paying anything more for sick time because it's either on the job or they pick sick time. But the possibility of additional overtime is where that money's gonna end up going.
Right.
So, I got a question on a diff, on a, on a different, different level. So, when, did we order, I've refreshed my memory about the scanners that, for their courthouse.
Ordered two of them.
We ordered two of them. We went through the competitive bidding process.
How long does that process take?
Um, we check them weekly. They should be, um, delivered and set up first week in June.
And the reason I ask is I had just read something the other day about those type of scanners now have the ability to sanitize or, uh, and maybe not sanitize, but detect, um, uh, viruses, those type of things now, uh, that they have those out. And I thought, wow, that would have been something good to have. Of course, you don't know where you're at, but to be able to, to scan people as they come in for that as well would have been, uh, pretty, pretty neat.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Well, we got a one o'clock meeting, so.
I guess we have a five-minute executive session.
Let's take a couple seconds out. Um, and, um, I gotta go to the restroom.
I do too.
But then, what, how long are we gonna be in executive session, I guess?
I don't think it'll be too long. Give the, the list. Something on the other the list.
So, we can just do it real quick and be done?
I think we can do it fairly quickly.
Okay. All right. Um, need a motion to go into executive session for legal matters. We are in executive session. We are in the executive session.
I mean, you post them.